With quorum, I'll call to order the special meeting of Rochester-Stockbridge Unified District. At 6:47? Addition, additions and fractions to the agenda. Hearing none, we're going to go into... This would be...I don't see a number on the top of this.
Remember we go by the date now?
Yes, okay.
Updated 4/17.
This is the 4/17. Draft, draft not...let's go with draft 9. Oh, I think the last one was draft 8. So, what we're looking at here is another pass of the budget. It is under the...it does comply with the Act 46 merger requirements. It is under the excess spending threshold. It still preserves doubling the guidance in Stockbridge, doubling the music in Stockbridge, increasing some of the summer coverage in the Stockbridge office.
Doubling the nurse.
Doubling the nurse.
Increasing math.
What?
Full-time guidance in Rochester.
Right, full-time guidance in Rochester. Yeah, increasing some of the math.
Yeah, increasing math in Stockbridge.
Right, there's some of that in here. I think that the last round, if a full-time person is not in here. This includes some changes to the administration model. We're able to retain the current Rochester principle who, as a person who's ensconced in Vermont, the V-Stars program reduces our costs for administration, at least for next year. There's one other adjustment.
We did reduce the inter...
Yeah, we went over with the fine-toothed clone, the interschool programming a little bit. We checked and verified and were able to tighten the technology. I was just kind of giving a general overview, and David was going to kind of go through it.
And I would remind everybody, our goal tonight is to hopefully find a number that we are happy with, that we feel comfortable with, that we are understanding, so we'll be able to move forward.
Right, this is less of a theoretical give-and-take kind of conversation and more of the "we need to get to a number to warrant it, to take something out to the community."
Well, if I may, from last week, it was very clear that we need to have a budget that we can stand behind, to the people.
And I think that...I feel after spending four and a half hours at the SU yesterday with Carl, I have a much better understanding of what we're buying, you know, and what kind of programming we can have, and what some of our needs are. We spoke for quite a while with the technology to just kind of find out what, you know, what they're planning on...
Technology, what is that?
Well, like the equipment, what was he planning on purchasing?
He's a technology teacher.
No.
Not a...or director of technology.
Correct. I guess I was just trying to use that as an example of, you know, we really went through it to see, you know, to really get a good understanding of it and to try to do the best that we can. We have to remember that this is...we're taking small steps, this is our first year. We do want to do some major things as we walk down this road together, but we need to take it in small steps.
So, we're under the cap.
We're...
Under the 5...we're under 5% cap.
Where do the excess spending threshold?
Correct.
David will probably go over.
Yeah, why don't we move into letting David go through more of the nuts and the bolts?
So, what we're seeing here is the summary of the tax impact of the budget as being presented by our chair. This section over here, you can see how we calculated what the education spending is. The equivalent by equalized pupils, and you get the total pupil spending, which drives the tax rate. This is the...the spending per pupil is $17,629 under the $17,816. Equalized tax rate by the expenditures divided by the equalized pupils. Here we come down to the equalized tax rate of $1.798 cents incentive, breaks down to $1.71. And then compared to last year, the merger law says that we cannot pay more than 5% above our equalized tax rate of last year, which was $1.4476 in Rochester. So, we cannot spend more than 8 cents above that, or can't be 8 cents below or above it. So, this...no, sorry, let me back out of it. The 5% is not the homestead tax rate, it's the equalized tax rate. So, they take the equalized tax rate, which is hidden there, I'll just show it out. $1.62 is our equalized tax rate. So, add the 8 cents, 8.13 cents from here up to that, and you come to $1.7078. And you take it away from that, comes to $1.854. So, somewhere in that range of $1.70 to $1.54 is what our equalized tax rate will be in Rochester, and it'll be the same in Stockbridge. Because our preliminary is outside of that range, we get drawn down to the upper limit of the range, so we are paying on $1.70 and $1.71 that we calculated from our spending and our equalized pupils. So, equalized tax rate is $1.7078, and it's obviously the same for both towns, it's a single unified district now, so you have the same equalized tax rate. And then because the CLA is different in each town, divide that into the equalized tax rate to get the homestead tax rate. So, because the properties in Rochester are valued above the market, the CLA is above 100%, so you divide by more than 100%, you get a lower tax...a lower homestead tax rate than the equalized tax rate. Exact reverse is...well, not exactly, it's similar direction, but not quite as strong. So, in Stockbridge, a CLA of 104% means that the properties are valued at 104% of what the market says they're valued, so they're a little bit overpriced for the market. And so, it reduces the $1.70 down to $1.63 as the homestead rate in Stockbridge. So, this is the overall picture. The last thing that we want to look at on this page, I think, is the change in the homestead tax rate. So, up here in fiscal '18, the homestead tax rate was $1.4476, and in '19, we're looking at $1.49, so it's almost 5 cents more, and that's where that number comes from, the difference between the $1.4948, the homestead tax rate after the CLA has been applied to the equalized tax rate. Compare that to the homestead tax rate the prior years has gone up about four, almost 5 cents. And over here, it goes up almost 4 cents from $1.5970 to $1.6347. So, that's the tax picture. Next, we can...we should go and look at the components, what goes into this. And I'll look first at revenue, and then secondly, at expenditures. But before we go any further, are there any further questions about what you see here or comments that you want to address, either to the board or questions to me? Hearing none, I'll go straight to revenue. The big change between this version of the budget and the one we saw last week is this line here, the small schools grant. In Stockbridge, it went down a little bit, from, I think it was $79,000 the last time, and in Rochester, went up by $264. I'd been trying for several weeks to find...to reach the agency of education to find out what the small schools grant would be for next year. The common practice of the AOE over the last 15 years is to send out in December an estimator of what the small schools grant is, and then you don't know anything else until you start receiving it in October of the following year. I got no word back, I had no communication with AOE until I met on Friday at a meeting with...somebody was there from the AOE, Brad James. And I asked him directly, and he said, "Well, the answer to your question is that you have to go back to the statute, to Act 46. And if you go back to Act 46, what you see in there is that when two school districts merge, as long as they don't close a school, they keep the same small schools grant dollar value in perpetuity."
This is for having a high school.
That's...I believe it. I believe they're going to change that.
So, if you think they're going to allow that to continue, you're not in the same camp as the customer over here, because I'm with her.
There's no way that'll continue, there's no way.
It is for this year.
It is for this year.
Well, I doubt it.
And they are still trying to change all sorts of things this year. Whether they will be successful, we don't know. One of the things that relates to us compared to what's in the legislature at the moment is on the tax sheet, we saw that we came in at $1.71 when we calculated our equalized tax rate, but we came down to the 5% boundary, the limits. Some people in the legislature want to do away with those limits, so we would lose on that. So, there's all sorts of things out there.
Luckily, it's only a half cent in this budget. Only a half cent if that 5% goes away, because we really didn't want to count on it. We want to, but we don't want to really get any others, so it's only a half a cent difference there.
So, this year is more maniacal in the legislature than it usually is. It's usually maniacal at the end of the year. Some people call it the Christmas tree phrase, phase of the budget, of the legislative process, when people start hanging things on all sorts of pieces of legislation, and so we don't know what's going to come out. It's usually not rational at this time of the legislative process, so we don't know what's going to happen, but this is the information we have right now, and the board has to make a decision about what it wants to recommend to the board, based on the knowledge we have now. Remembering that the majority, by far the majority of districts voted on their budget in March, so they had even less information than you have. So, as much as you'd like to have more certainty, imagine how much more certainty those people in January, when the boards voted for the March town meeting votes. It's a crazy system, but that's how it is, and that's what we work with, every year we work with this. This year, it seemed to be a little bit strange than usual. Coming back to here, so the revenue here went up substantially. So, with the revenue going up, it means that the difference in our total expenditures and our revenue is our education spending, which drives the tax rate. So, that difference between the two means that it's a smaller gap, means a lower tax rate. So, adding more revenue means a lower tax rate, or the same amount of expenditures. That's the main thing that's different in here. The other vulnerability that I'll mention again, I'm not sure if we've rehearsed it, the things are happening in Washington, as you know. Things are happening strangely in Montclair, they're happening even more strangely in Washington, and we don't know what kind of Title I money is going to be made available to states and to districts. So, we are making some assumptions here, that we will get this amount. It's considerably less than we've been getting in the past, it's been going down over the years. And I just read a letter from a year ago, in which the secretary of education advised that districts should only expect to have 75% of what they had the prior year. To make it...because many districts will use Title I money in the summer, so they have to get their application in June, and so the advice at this time, a year ago, was put your application in just up to 75% of what you've usually had in the recent years. If more money comes, you can make an amendment to spend the higher amount, but to be sure that you don't put in an application which leaves you high and dry, just put in for a lower amount, and then add things later as we become more certain as to what the feds are going to be getting us. Part of the legitimacy of Washington is that their fiscal year starts from September, goes through September, starts in October, goes through September. So, when they are budgeting for their next year, we already have our three years into our new fiscal year, and so there's an overlap to avoid. So, that's the revenue side. On the expenditure side, you've already had some insights as to the major items that have been changing. One of the, from a programmatic point of view, not from a dollar point of view, but from a programmatic point of view, one of the big changes was in this area of interschool programming. The group that met yesterday felt that the board would want to have something in there as a placeholder, something so that when we come around next year, we say, "Oh, yeah, we should remember about that." We had thought this was a good idea, but we couldn't put a lot of money in this budget, or we might want to reconsider what we want to do for next year. So, interschool programming, where the music from this school, music program from that school could get together and form a big chorus, or a big band, or whatever it was, that style of thing. We put a small amount here in the general age for prepay. We put another amount down in here for K6, but it was a much smaller amount than was presented last time around. So, in the pre- kindergarten, we see interschool programming of $2,000. It was, I think, somewhere around $6,000 last time, something like that. And down here, the interschool programming is also reduced down to 2,000, and special program down here is at 4,000. So, the total of these is 8,000, 2,400, and 2,000 there. Previously, it was 24,000, so there was a big significant percentage of that programming was reduced. So, what's in there is a placeholder, something that will get us going in our first year of operation. It may not be where we want to be in the second, or fifth, or 10th year, but it's a start, and it's a way of saying, "This is something we need to remember to work on for next year." In addition to the...so that's both interschool programming, where there will be some exchange of students and or teachers. And special programs would be things within a school, which would be enrichment activities that...where it might be anything from foreign language introduction to an enrichment in mathematics, or enrichment in language, or artisan residence, or any of those kind of combinations. So, that's one of the areas that changed since the last time you looked at it. And then we also looked at some of the other things that were mentioned. We made a change to the cluster of the principal. So, what we did here was to look at between the two schools, one and a half FTEs, to be divided more or less equally between the two schools. So, there'd be 125,000, previously it was more like 150,000, 160,000, something like that. So, something like $40,000 was cut out of this line from the previous version. The other thing that was done was SAP counselor support services for students. So, what's happened down here is that the...so this needs to be taken out. So, the goal was to take the SAP counseling out, well, that the person who was going to...in each school who was going to be doing the SAP counseling, which is substance abuse prevention counseling, would be the guidance counselor. And the goal was to have part of the guidance counselor charged up here to the SAP counselor, because some of that work is grant-funded, so we need to have it recorded here so that we can get the revenue in to support that. And I can see that I didn't succeed in doing all of it the way I hoped to do it. I did some of it, so that, for example, down here in Stockbridge, we see that the guidance counselor, I mean, a total of .4, is divided by .36 for guidance, and .04 for SAP counseling. But the benefits for this are buried down in here. Here, the benefits are up here, so it's not a direct...didn't achieve everything that it intended to do, but it's got a part where there.
Are the numbers the same, or is there some adjustment in that number?
There are some adjustments. So, this number needs to come out, because it's down in here.
Okay.
And over here, I didn't have the opportunity to put a number...well, the number down here needs to be put up there, it's the other way around, so that we're showing that there's SAP expenses, so we can use that to offset the revenue that's coming in to support. And then this one, we brought that sum up there. So, bottom line is, there is an amount in here which is more than is needed, and that we need to take out tonight before we vote.
Okay.
But...
That's good, it's a minus, that's good.
It's a minus. One of the concerns that were debated yesterday was that we might be...the question was, maybe we were paying twice for the same service, the student testing, the STAR360 program. And I was able to research that and discover that there is no amount, there's no part of this service that's in the assessment for technology. And each district enters into an agreement and makes a separate, cuts its own check to Renaissance, the company that hosts it. There are three components to their service. One is a hosting service, which means that you get your foot in the door. There's a subscription service, where you pay on the basis of the number of students that are going to be accessing this testing opportunity. And then there's some additional services. And what we saw, what we saw here, in effect, and was only in Rochester, was this year we've already spent $57,000, $5,700. $57.96 was spent here, so it was...6,000 was put in, and it was divided equally between the two, so that both would have access to it. Whether that's a service that we want for next year, it's relatively small potatoes, but it's an opportunity, it's an opportunity. Right now, it's in the budget. And then down in the technology, there are the regular expenses for the software. So, this is an additional service, which wasn't righteous only. Of the four districts that I looked at, it was only one that had that service. All the others had just the hosting and the subscription.
So, Bonnie, the hosting and the subscription are in this line item? Hosting and subscription? This is just the additional services?
Are those services we're going to be needing going forward, Bonnie? Do you know what those are?
Those are the assessment pieces, David?
STAR360.
Yeah, those are the...
Well, the regular STAR360 is...
Yes?
Yes, yes.
They're listed on the bill as professional development services.
In addition to the hosting and the subscription side? I don't know what they say.
These are the primary monitoring testing that we do with kids to find out what, how they're making progress in their class. And we're doing it throughout the whole issue in every one of the schools. So, this is just, would be Stockbridge and Rochester's share of that amount of money. We can do that as many times as we want to during the year, and I think they do in Rochester three times to see how the kids are doing in math, and same thing with Stockbridge.
So, you're saying that these...this line item, 165 for the STAR360 test, is actually an assessment from the SU?
No, from the SU.
No, not from the SU.
This is a separate... This is the tool, Rochester. This is the tool we use.
It's a tool that we use to assess our kids. It's not...sorry, I was getting those confused then. Okay. And this is a tool that is used in other schools as well?
All of the SU.
Okay. Just...he said that he didn't...the way he said it sounded like it was not in other schools.
No.
It's national, it's all over. It's all over, okay. So, these are the additional...
It's not...
This particular expense is not in other schools. This particular expense, this line.
They have a different expense, but they have...
These are different services, totally different services.
What are you talking about there?
I'm talking about, on the bill to Rochester, there are three sections. All the other districts have only two sections. So, the item here is the third section.
And it's for...
And it's called Assessment, Renaissance, and Annual Implementation of Data Coaching Renewal.
Bring it over.
And that was $5,697, $5,697.
That does sound like professional. Let's take that out, please.
We have, yeah, we won't.
You want to take that out?
Yes.
So, you will still have hosting, and some things down in the technology area.
Are we taking that, are we sharing that?
How much is it?
$600, he said.
Can you bring it over and show them? But of what kind?
Sounds like it was data coaching.
But let's know what it is before we start...
Well, I do know that we did have...our teachers did not know how to administer the STAR360 test at one point, but...
I think what this is, is when the results come back from the STAR360, this helps them to understand what they have to do in order to work on the areas that the kids need. So, it's a...but I'm a little puzzled, because I don't know whether other schools within the SU are using this same tool.
How is it extra?
It must have been something that Danny wanted to ask for.
Subscription?
The hosting.
You have an access to this other...
And it's a professional development. I'm sure that's something Danny paid for then, or Danny decided to get, the board approved.
Bonnie says we have not accessed it in 1911.
To my understanding, we've had no professional development around any of our assessments since I arrived.
It looks like it's an annual fee, so I mean, if it's something that...do you want to look into a little bit to make sure it's something we're not using, or do we just want to take it right out?
If we're not using it, should we be using it?
If it's data, what I think it is, and what I think it is, is it's data assessment coaching. It helps people better understand, "If I take the STAR360 and I get this..."
How's the data?
"What do you do to help me move forward?" And that's what I believe it is.
So, the teacher gets information on how to...here's all the scores in my classroom. Here's what I can suss this out and decide that we really need to be focused more on building word banks, or we really need to be focused more on these aspects of numbers, or something like that.
They don't give that to you online? STAR360 doesn't give you a...
They give you some of that, but I think that...see, I'm not really certain this...
We need to look into this before you start taking it out.
Let's leave it in there.
I think if we can leave it in, if it's what I believe it is, we'll take good use of it, and we'll connect with Stockbridge, because they're giving the same assessments. If it is professional development, then we'll build that into our professional development calendar for next year. I'm hesitant to take it out, because I'm not certain it isn't going to help us.
Let's know what the thing is before we do something with it.
Sorry, go ahead.
My question would be, wouldn't a teacher know when a student is or is not learning something?
Not necessarily.
No?
The beauty of this test is that it gives you things that you can...teachers can do, like grouping kids together that are in similar places, knowing what the next skill is that they need. And yeah, there's a lot of teachers that are intuitive enough to figure that out, but this takes some of the guesswork out of that. What are they missing? What is it, why are they doing poorly here? What did they miss? And so, they work on that unit to be able to...
So, this highlights a specific weakness that we have...
Right, and gives the teacher some ideas about how to correct it.
It's data-driven instruction, although the data, not how you think the kid may be, or what he might be missing, but what does the data show you? What is the evidence? And the tests give you that, so that then you get the diagnosis, and you can make a far clearer prescription for the student.
All right, thank you, David.
And then I'll just show you one example of the shaving that was done yesterday down here in the equipment for buildings and grounds here in Rochester. There was $12,000 in there before, and by identifying what specific items there were that were going to be purchased with that $12,000, we decided to cut back to $10,000. That would be sufficient to cover the items that were needed. So, that's just an illustration of the kind of level of shaving that was done yesterday. And I think with that, I'll stop and see what question anybody might have.
Go ahead.
I still don't understand why our snow removal is done by the town, and theirs in Rochester's is not. That's a pretty big difference between snow removal and grounds. Our town crew does ours, and they get paid by the mile as they plow, and they get paid to do our parking lot. So, I don't understand...
People do, and the town does our parking lot, but if you think about this campus, there's a lot more sidewalks, fire entrance that have to be cleared, and our custodial staff does that. And we have this year, Danny had set up a contractor with a small snowplow to do the wider sidewalks out here in front of the high school building. There's just a lot of sidewalks and entryways that have to be cleared.
Well, you know how I can solve that.
All right. I think it's something we could be working on, year two, to find more efficiencies.
Right. I think that's what we need to do is...
Because our town pays, the town pays for ours, and your town probably should pay for yours.
And maybe that's something we can have a discussion about with our snack board going forward, but it's already...
The town pays for this, but not the sidewalks.
Right, and I think there's also, as the building usage patterns change, that we may find that we're not needing to clear nearly as...
we may find that we're not needing to clear nearly as many.
You don't have a high school that's driving well, so you may not need all the parking lots.
Exactly. And I think that as we go forward, especially in this next year, those next six months, we're gonna, we're gonna have a lot of discussion about these efficiencies. Unfortunately, we can't do that tonight. But yes, that is on the list of something we need to be aware of.
Philosophically, Joanne, I think in a lot of these situations, the idea of, you know, we're, we're verifying that, yes, these numbers are based on a, on a school that operated very differently than it's going to be operating now, but I think at the end of the day, what we, we all kind of agree that it's more important to over budget and come in low and save money.
Oh, Carl, you know how Stockbridge hates that. But I'd like to, I would like to ask while, while we're there, obviously the joke's on Stockbridge because Rochester already knows this. So we're talking one zone, correct? Is that what we're talking about? Might as well just say it.
Which one?
One zone in this school is open, right?
They're, they're, yes. We are, we are going to, we are going to be keeping the, the one zone in, in the high school open, yes.
Because obviously, they all know it, but we don't.
I didn't know.
You didn't know that?
We've never, we've never actually.
We've actually never even had a conversation about it. Obviously, if the heat is on.
Well, no, but we haven't actually, even though the heat is stayed in the budget, we haven't actually.
This is assuming one zone is open at lower heat. Yeah.
I guess.
I mean, somebody must know that answer.
Jenny's point is, but I just want to be clear about this, the basis that I shared last time was a plumber's look at this system. And if this system is really going to be absolutely shut down at some point, I mean, shut down completely, then you need to do more of an engineering look at.
Right. And obviously, there would be two different amounts in the budget. One, the building's shut down due to a little bit of heat, or we were using one zone. So, I mean, this budget had to be built on one way or the other.
This budget is built on using one zone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I asked Mr. Labs that when I walked in, he had no idea.
Because I didn't know.
How would you know?
That's where the numbers came out from.
Yeah, I mean, please, we're not that stupid.
How from the, the line two twenty-four, the salary for the custodian went up seven thousand from last time?
Because we found it was a different person that has seniority.
This budget assumes two custodians here?
I've got a question about the tuition numbers. Are you, are you taking those numbers at the sixteen-five maximum allowable tuition?
David had actually done some pretty extensive work for us in regards to what we were paying for tuition, actually using.
No, this is under revenue.
Oh, the revenue side of, he has, here we go.
At the fourteen, four eighteen.
Here's his revenue, we're, he's doing it at five fifteen-five. Fifteen-five is the revenue tuition for Rochester. And Stockbridge did?
And Stockbridge did.
Okay. So if you don't know if you're allowable, that's right. Is that conservative? Is that what you're saying? Um, because that's going to be a big difference. I mean, if we're coming in at seventeen thousand, roughly.
Jack up our tuition.
The state is never going to allow us to have sixteen-five as allowable tuition. They just aren't going to do it because there's a certain percentage that you can't go above where your actual cost of per student for that. So Bruce, I sent you an email about that to give you a heads up because you sent me a letter in December saying, if you're going to bring something up, give me a heads up so that I can investigate.
When was the email?
So, my question is, at the four eighteen, how many students is that incorporating for tuition in Rochester?
Keep telling me what line item you're on, please.
It's the revenue.
On the revenue sheet, thank you.
The four hundred and eighteen five.
Tuition case of six.
Twenty-seven for Rochester.
Right. And it would be six for Stockbridge.
You're right.
Are we really getting twenty-seven?
Yes. David, if David could pull up that tuition revenue again?
We have a lot of tuition.
We have, you can see we have two preschool and.
Tim, we've worked really hard on.
There's twenty-seven.
To try to make sure they're real.
Was this the December date or the October date?
This is current AIS, right?
David? Let's hope. I want to verify that these are the correct number of students.
March. And this was the, the bodies that were enrolled in Rochester in March.
Right. So there's two names that are B and C this.
There's our full name.
Because that's not in here and it doesn't tell you, tell us what.
The names are not in here, no, but there's actual students right here.
No, what I'm saying is, you're not, we're not seeing what you're pulling up for allowable tuition.
So that, you're saying that, yeah, that sheet's not in this packet on the thing.
Right.
So, so is this being figured at sixteen-five, fifteen-five?
Fifteen-five, you see the fifteen-five right there? Next to it?
It's up on the board.
Look on, on app, call them app.
Okay.
So you can see there's in grade six, the third student is a Hancock student, and there was fifteen-five for both Rochester and Stockbridge, all K through six tuition kids. He's assuming it's fifteen-five. Then you have a different rate for preschool.
Right.
And again, this was actual bodies.
Right. And we intend to, you know, when you, when you set a allowable tuition and then after the fact, you see where that number was and what the actual costs were, and there's a three percent swing on either side of those, and, you know, we, we have, at least, we, we have, you know, as long as we're, we're relatively on target, we have, you know, intentions of doing what Stock does to us, which is. Build back. If we need to build back, we build back.
I think that'll be a discussion for another time that this board has to talk about.
But I mean, that's, that's not something that, that.
We might come at a different opinion.
I think what's confusing situation is comparing the education spending equalized pupil with the tuition per, per students. That's a totally different number.
That's right.
They're talking, so they're not, they're not covering the costs of the same students.
That's right.
And they're not covering the same cost for the same students. So you can't compare the apples and oranges. Then you could, you could find another way of counting students and counting costs and you could come up with maybe ninety or twenty thousand per student. And which would be the right one? The right one would be the right one for the purpose for which it was being calculated. So for taxes, the amount is fifteen, is, is the seventeen thousand. Education spending pre-equalized pupils includes certain expenses, excludes some. It includes some students, it excludes some. The per pupil spending for the allowable tuition includes the students who are your, who are your tuition in students, which the equalized pupil does not. So it's a different body of students. And it can be, for a place like Rochester, it can be significantly different. If you've got twenty or thirty students coming into Rochester, that's going to change the number of, the denominator for the, what the cost is divided by significantly compared to the equalized pupils.
Yes. In a thousand dollar swing for twenty-five kids is a lot of money. So what I'm saying is.
I hear what you're saying, but I think you're mistaken. I think you're comparing apples and oranges because the cost, education spending for equalized people cannot be compared to the, the allowable tuition cost for.
I'm not, I'm not misunderstanding. I know that this year, we were getting sixteen-five from Hancock and Granville students coming to Rochester. That was the maximum allowed, allowable tuition for primary school students.
They noted at the end of the year, after the actual cost.
It's on their website. We know that it was sixteen-five.
If you've never seen the allowable tuition on the website, that's why I think you're confused. You see the announced.
No, you see the allowable. And you see what we're actually charging. We were charging twenty thousand for secondary, sixteen-five. I'm not misconfused. I've seen it, I saw it.
Tim, I think we're getting, I think we're kind of getting a little off track in terms of the budget. We'll go through and look at where, we can look at where we at. The, the important thing to remember is that the, the, the amount we are allowed to put in our budget is the announced tuition, which is the fifteen-five.
Okay.
If there's, if there's, if, if the real cost changed one way or the other, we either have to refund or we have to build back, or it's in the three percent wiggle room and we just call it a wash and walk away.
All right. So are, is the state going to allow us to charge fifteen-five?
The state is going to allow us to charge fifteen-five.
Okay. That was my original question.
Okay.
You know, is, is the state going to allow us to charge whatever you're figuring the tuition?
Yeah, we, we, this is, that is the number and I just verified it right now. I just looked it up on the AOE website.
Okay. So, see, it is there.
There is something called the allowable tuition.
The announced tuition, yeah, is what I'm looking at. This is what, because the allowable tuition is a back, is a looking backwards number. The, the announced is a looking forward number. So we're looking forward for a budget, so we're using that announced tuition.
Okay.
There's no health insurance for the principal for Stockbridge, is there?
Yeah.
One eighty-seven. Auction terms, yes. Yeah, you have the question.
I think, I think we're, we're heading into a problem here of being caught between two, 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 two banks of the river split down the middle. What's happened on Monday was that the budget committee, or thought the budget committee that met, decided to not budget based on actual positions, but to budget based on.
They're taking thirty thousand from the budget, we need to have some.
If you listen to me carefully, you'll, you'll hear, you'll hear the explanation for your question. So what was done on Monday was to say, we're not going to budget based on, so the health insurance is not based on particular positions. It's based on a one-point-oh FTE for a total of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that, the direct answer to your question is that thirty-one thousand is spread between the two positions.
That's a healthy number.
That's a healthy number for two.
Zero is zero.
Right. Well, just in terms of people to commit the budget and understanding it easily, that's the kind of thing where it'd be nice if the number was a low percentage. Right. So just to understand, if you're, if you're saying thirty-one-seven is, is what the, the total would be for the, the, the two people that'd be filling that, one twenty-five thousand, let's just split that number around the middle too, just so there's not a zero that catches people's eye. For the sake of, of this particular item, Bonnie just told me, she doesn't need any help, so.
Well, then it might be nice to switch the number, please.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, like you and Stockbridge, like you and we're a cap.
Zeros catch your eye. Why is something a zero? And one comma.
Blank spaces catch the eye. Make sure.
And, I mean, if you, if you look at the top, and as much as for us, fifty-nine percent of the expenditures and there's, they're, you know, I mean, it's.
This is all a rehearsal for what we have to do later on.
Exactly. That's why I'm saying we just, we want to prepare it so we can, so we can talk about it.
Perfect.
So we saw that problem created another problem. I have to do the next finding. The problem that we've created is that we've now taken part in health insurance for the administrative systems. So when the committee yesterday decided they were not going to tie the budget to positions, but decided to have this global floating group of principals.
Correct.
They didn't indicate how they wanted to deal with the other expenses that went with it. And, and this, this gets there, answers the question of, we don't want to have zeros to telephone us this time. I just tell you that all the other items in there wasn't.
Right, okay. No, I mean, the, the key thing is, is that we, we have the proper FICA, we have the proper unemployment, we have the proper insurance numbers for the, for the, the blended positions, you know, and they're, and, and we're not, we're not going to have, as Jenny put it, a thirty thousand dollar surprise. That's good to know.
Carl, did you check on whether there should be another seventh grade student in Stockbridge listed on the two sixteen, line two sixteen-nine?
I believe he's included.
Because he wasn't included in the original one. There's six Stockbridge, six grades right now.
In the, are there six in the class?
Yeah, there's two new ones this year.
Okay. So then.
So that's another seventeen.
Right, that would be the, that would be the one.
Talking about. There's a good person that they, they know about.
He used to go to Stockbridge, but he goes to a different school then.
Right. But he finishes elementary school at, at a different, a different school, his parents were paying tuition. And now that he's a seventh grader, he gets, he comes back and he should be in at the state allowable.
Okay.
The other thing to remember, and I don't know if that's this situation, but sometimes when you see your op by number like that, in the state of Vermont, if, if mom and dad live in different towns, a youngster can go to either school tuition free. Sometimes that.
Correct. That's, that's why so much of the, of the role of the Stockbridge principal and the Stockbridge office manager is verifying everyone's residency because people, people pop on your, well, and sometimes it's very legitimate, you know? Mom, the kid's been living with mom and getting elementary school somewhere else and now they want to move in some, someplace and take advantage of the fact that dad lives in Stockbridge. And that's legit. Other times, you know, you find out that a homestead is, you know, some made-up address up a road somewhere.
Exactly.
Just another zero that popped up at me was the.
Number?
It was forty-six tuition. And I'm sure there's a simple answer for that, but it just doesn't.
Yep, that is, that.
Is that another point we're blending in?
No. No, that is a specific Rochester resident that is being tuitioned and Stockbridge does not have any.
Or why is that different than our registration?
It's not, it's basic.
We should talk about it in the.
It's not.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to know about that.
And that probably would, is going to be a question at party, so it would be nice we have the proper narrative to discuss that.
Yes. So we, we, we don't go all hip and furby.
We can't do executive session, no, we'll be annual meeting.
Well, no, but if the question's off the floor, we need to have the correct answer.
That's what we need, all these questions, that's what we're here for, is to challenge everything so that we know.
Right, exactly.
Retirement, retirement, then that's line forty, thirty-seven. There's something for Stockbridge, there's nothing for Rochester. And again, nothing.
The answer to that is a simple answer. It only relates to the parent educator.
Gotcha.
You don't pay any retirement for teachers.
Gotcha.
And there's no parent educator in due proportion.
So that's to, that's seventeen, seventy-seven.
Yep.
Right. And that is, that is not, that is a five oh four parent educator. We'll put a bit on our central office question.
All right.
What did you just say? Were you asking a question about five oh four?
Oh, no, no, at some point I'd like, yeah, I, I don't actually know on five oh four.
Oh, a, a, a five oh four, so it's section five oh four of the, I want to say IDA.
Civil Rights Act.
Civil Rights Act. Oh, a, 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 a five oh four, so, it's section five oh four of the, uh, I want to say IDB.
Civil Rights Act.
Civil Rights Act, but basically, it, it, it says that, that, uh, students need to be accommodated in, in their school for, uh, uh, physical disability or, or physical challenges, and...
And there's no money in the budget for it?
The, it's not, it's not a fed, it's, it's, it's just a civil rights law. It's not a, it's not, it's not a federal education policy. So, kids that are on IDB or, or special education, often there's, there's reimbursement that goes to their services, so they're handled through the Special Education Department. Um, the way the Civil Rights Act works is, you know, the district is responsible for their own. So, this, this person, you know, has, uh, has a need for a par educator to, 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 to help the student or...
And this is a physical need, or a... It could be anything, a broad section.
Right, body cast, can't come to school, we have to accommodate, make sure that they have...
Yeah, it could be a short-term or a long-term situation.
Equal opportunity.
Right, right, it's, it's, the, the biggest difference is not a, a, a special education, uh, uh, idea is there, there are two gateways about the kid's educational capabilities that the, the, the child has to meet. My, how much do I have to bring there?
Three gateways.
Uh, three gateways, okay, there's, there's, but, but basically, it's a different, it's a, the, the, because that's the, the, those are the federal IDB regulations, they, you know, they, they come with, with funding from the federal government to offset those costs. The civil rights costs of, of, of five oh four, a, a student, you know, are just, it's just bored by the town.
People often think of it as, as the RAM Act, it was originally, it was section five oh four of the Civil Rights Bill that children who had physical disabilities began accessing schools. In the early fifties, if you couldn't climb the stairs, you couldn't come to school. And basically, that's...
That's where it started.
It's really just an accommodation. If you make the accommodation, the youngster can learn adequately. If you don't make the accommodation, the youngster can't access.
All right, two forty-three, two forty-four, fuel, propane, is that going to be based on a contract that the Supervisory Union has entered into? Yes, all right, okay. Then have they, have they accepted bids already, or, so that's all, that's all set?
The rest is issued, and so we'll begin.
Like, when?
Uh, probably in the fall, spring or fall.
Really, that way?
Yeah, um, David, once, once a bid go out for fuel, do you know?
I think we work with the, with a middle person, is that right? Yeah, it's the engine company out of New England. Engine company, and they, they, they investigate the market every day, and they, they come up with, so we, we take advantage of, of the best expertise out there that's available. So, a lot, there are a number of companies that do this across New England, across the country now. So, they are consolidators, basically.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and so, we, they will, they will call us in a moment's notice and say, "We think it's time to, to, are you, are you ready to move in and make a bid tomorrow, because the price on, on the market is..."
I was asking, because I know I get my, I know I get my contract from, yeah, for propane, and I know it's coming up fairly soon, and they'll say, "Here it is," you know, lock it, and, you know, it'll be coming up soon, so...
These, these folks also lock in Dartmouth College and the Hitchcock Hospital and things like that.
That's great, thank you.
I have a question. What are the repair and maintenance cost of forty-nine thousand dollars for...
Can you use a line item number, so we can...
Two thirty-six.
Two thirty-six. Two thirty-six.
Um, I, I don't know if Bonnie can speak specifically, but I do know historically in our budget that, that has been, um, numbers in, in that area, it is a big number, but...
Does that include the high school, or is that just the elementary school?
I can only speak for historically, in our historical budget, I have seen high numbers in that line item.
For next year, it's going to be just the elementary school, but we do have some significant, um, we do have some significant issues. We have some, some leaks in the roof, we have some plumbing issues that have to be addressed. We have glycol in the floor that we're not sure has been maintained, and we need to make sure that's maintained.
Is, is, is there a breakdown somewhere of where this, of where this number was generated?
Yes, Jessie generated it from actual past that she feels needs to be completed.
So, it's projected forward?
Right, and it's, it is her...
Estimates?
It is her best guess, no, she did not get estimates from all of the different contractors, but she feels she has a pretty good handle on.
So, that's the elementary school, that's not touching the high school.
That's not doing anything at the high school at this point. Now, if one zone stays open in the high school and something goes wrong over there, you know, a heater or something, obviously, obviously, we have to address it.
Yeah, it's a, that's a, it's a big number.
It is.
To not, I, I feel like I don't know that I can defend that number without estimates and some sort of breakdown of where that number came from. It's one of the biggest numbers we've got.
Or maybe if we had a list of, from...
Yeah, I mean, even if we saw her list...
Looking now.
Projected, and got a copy of it, but we...
The glycol thing is the floor in the addition?
Yeah, and we talked about it.
That we talked about, I think it's two meetings ago?
Yeah, but she gave us the report, but it took the nice deal to defend that.
Carl, do you know what the fifteen for Stockbridge includes?
Uh, I want to say, um, softening in the, uh, the hot water in the kitchen. I think there, there's some window gaskets, Jim said. I mean, I think, I think that, you know, he had put together that list.
So, what is the current list?
It is, it is relatively, it is, it is relatively current.
It'd be nice to see both of the lists.
Sure, and I think it's important, as we're having this conversation, I think what we need to be thinking about just as a board is, are these the things, you know, is, is, is a number here so, so egregious or so, so questionable that we need to, you know, uh, uh, do another version, stop and try to do this, this, this another time? Or is the number relatively close, so that, because the goal tonight is not to produce, you know, a budget narrative and not to have split all the money into all the particular cells, uh, completely accurately. The number we need to have is, we need to have that, you know, four million, whatever it is, uh, figure that, that goes on to our, goes on to our warning. Some of the, and, and I think it's important that we're identifying narratives that we need to put together into our stories, but I think it's also...
Confirm, this is an open meeting where lines can be changed, numbers can be changed off the floor. So, if it is an open meeting, and they're looking at, are they looking at a budget on that, in that open meeting? Are they looking at this?
Yes, they were looking at a book that they've been sent, and they come in with questions.
Then, we better have backup for every single line, because it is going to be that.
Sure, I think it's important that we, that we identify that, but...
That we be able to, we be able to answer, and I think that's, that's what we set ourselves as our task, is that we can get behind...
Each number.
Every number on this.
Correct, correct, I, I, I agree with that.
So, I understand that you're saying we're trying to get to a general overall number, in that sense, I, I trust the work you did, and I think in the ballpark, I'm looking at things that are going to, you know, raise people's hands and make...
Right, 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 I, I, but I think, I, what I was trying to get at is, I think the, the, the part we need to do tonight is say, "We think this, we, we, we believe you, Bonnie, we think this number is good, give us a detailed explanation so we can defend it," versus...
Oh, no, no, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm looking at everything, I'm, I'm thinking of the annual meeting, and I'm thinking of defense of this budget.
Yeah, and I, and I understand, and I think that's...
But I also think for my own, for my own well-being, you know, forty-nine thousand dollars, it's, it's up there, some of the numbers we're having, it's a lot of repairs. And I just think we need to care to see it, see it, yeah, I agree with that.
In the middle, you know, Nancy, Willie.
Um, do we have a date yet for our annual meeting?
We'll come out of this one tonight, if we...
If we, on this budget, we will have a date.
Tonight.
Tonight.
If we, if you don't resolve it tonight, it will be a different date.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Correct.
And every date we change gets closer to July one.
You got it.
What is our criteria as a board for accepting this number?
Well, I think we set a goal to be under the cap. I think we set a goal to be able to address our students' educational needs.
Okay, those, those two, isn't it? It's always good to know what, what you're...
Yeah, what we strive for.
Exactly.
Well, I think we have a goal to maximize the use of space, to sort of downsize for spaces that, that was another commitment, I think, that we're debating and working on this budget.
Right, and we have, and we have addressed, we have education between the two campuses.
Go ahead, Frank.
It doesn't matter.
I don't know, Joanne and I can do trial by conduct. No, no, I'm sorry, you've had the...
I'm just curious about, um, summer support, is that, um, janitorial?
What line?
Two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five.
That is, yeah, she already has the grounds and grounds, and, um, that is...
And don't we have the kids in the summer? And don't we have the kids in the summer?
We do not have kids in the summer, but we have lawns that need to be mowed, and we have...
So, ours don't?
Well, I think, I think also, is summer support for the, uh...
Enough with the looks.
It's for the Suzuki camp, we're painting the gym, the gym is scheduled to be painted this year.
Oh, that brings up another point, are we going to change the name?
For the campus, Stockbridge, is the full plan for where to pay for that, or is the...
That line is zero at Stockbridge, I think is what she's saying. Correct, for summer support, I wonder, um, if the salaries of the janitor is a year-round salary, or if that, or, or, you know, that takes into account the, um, camp in the summer?
This is just additional help for the custodians, we're cutting down...
Somebody to ride the lawnmower.
We're cutting down from three custodians to two.
We have a lawnmower too, and I guess we need to get our...
I think Francis, I think Francis has summer hours built into his, into his schedule.
Into that twenty-six thousand dollars, he's got the summer hours built into that.
He does. Frank?
I, I apologize if you've already spoken about this, but, but you get talking to wawwows and you keep talking. I just, I mean, I, I wanted to compliment David first for laying it out this way, this is very helpful, in looking at the FTEs. I just, I mean, and actually, I was pleased to see the salaries for the two principals, and that, that they're reasonable salaries. Can you just, can you just speak to the, to the principal, to the principal line, line one eighty-four?
Is that in a first to Bruce because of, you know, contract issues and, and, and that, so...
Well, I, I...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean this to be a hot potato, actually, I'd like to...
No, no, we were able to lower these lines because Bonnie is in the retirement system, and therefore, she can only make so much money. We believed that we would hire someone else, uh, we don't have any idea who that might be, but we wanted to have enough money in here to be able to find somebody. And we hope that maybe, uh, they would move back and forth and, and Bonnie, uh, because of all her experience, would be able to mentor, depending on who we found. And so, we, we've really put the amount in, uh, this to be able to support, um, hiring of someone else as well. So, that, stay tuned for that, we just started to advertise for that, so...
Okay, thank you.
Another hand call.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd love to know, again, why our janitor doesn't get paid to do the summer groundwork? If he could, he could maybe...
I think, I think the answer is that this money in the past has been able to support what's been done for him in Stockbridge. Don't know whether, I don't think we should crank it up just to crank it up. I mean, I think it reflects what we paid, um, and the way he's worked in the past, it's been able to support him, so...
So, because he hasn't, we just paid him the twenty-six thousand, I'm glad this is recorded. So, we're going to pay our guys twenty-six thousand, we've got the children there in the summer, and yet, versus seventy-eight?
Well, that is what your need has been.
Again, I'm glad this is recorded.
That is, if you have a different need, then we need to address that need.
We have a different need.
What is, what, what is...
I feel that should be looked at by our school board, all of you, because that's ridiculous.
To look at the amount of money the custodian is making?
Yeah, I mean, we actually have the children there in the summer program, like...
We do?
And so, he has to clean for that.
So, you feel, okay, um...
So, you've got money for the...
So, maybe we need to look into...
And we've got the kids.
Well, there's, there's, I, I, I think there's, there, there's an, an apples and oranges kind of difference in that. I mean, part of the, I mean, there's, I'm not sure, where's the revenue from the, the Suzuki program show?
It's buried in revenue, I don't think it's line item, David can pull it out.
What is this Suzuki program, I heard it talked about...
Yeah, it's this, um, huge music program that is a worldwide program that comes to, and it, like, doubles the population in Rochester when they show up. Um, it is every kid, they do, they have, is it private lessons, or?
It's both, I think.
It's a camp, it's a camp that they come to. Summer camp for prodigies.
It's a summer camp, it's a summer camp, it's going to that camp, or?
Rochester kids don't.
So, it's a camp that kids...
That's not true, that's not true.
I'm sorry.
And their parents come also.
Yeah, their parents, their parents come to see... Suzuki is a program where parents work and, and learn with the child as well.
I mean, it sounds like a great program.
Oh, it's a great program, and it takes over the school and all the buildings, and many of the pianos throughout the community. And they bring in, they also bring in...
Pierce Hall is used, the church is used.
It's like a meat farm.
Yeah, yeah, and they bring in, um, they bring in teachers from all across the country to come to teach here. It's a, it's a, it's a nationally...
It sounds wonderful, but again, but we have the kids every day all summer.
Well, I think maybe we need to look into, uh, the, the staffing needs for the, the summer camp in Stockbridge, and to make sure those staffing needs are being addressed and paid for properly, and maybe it is part of the One Planet's, um, budget. Maybe not part of our school's budget, and we should look into that.
Well, I mean, I'm talking to Janie about this situation in Stockbridge.
I'm sorry, what line is that?
As well as, Carl.
Uh, two twenty-five is where we started.
All right, thanks.
No, but I think it's reasonable to see if we're covering, if we're actually covering the number. Carl says he thinks so.
Well, I don't think it should be the person that's taking care of all these children, I mean, that's a huge job, to have to do that, and then after a long day, clean up, I mean, that's insane.
Well, I think that, I, I mean, I think that, again, you're looking at just, just the custodial piece of that. I think that the custodian's not necessarily supervising the kids, but...
No, I'm saying after the kids leave, you know, after a day of Lucas and whatever, should that teacher who's been with those children all day, it shouldn't be their responsibility?
No, I believe, I believe it's covered by the, you know, we, I believe there's hours for our custodian.
Oh.
And that twenty-six thousand...
So, it's not in this amount?
Twenty-six thousand dollars, I think he includes that in.
It's everything he does.
I believe that is his full compensation, and he's, uh, uh, he's, he's part-time.
It's part-time to do, that whole building is part-time.
He's happy with the work he's done with us for that money.
Oh, yeah, I have nothing to say on that, it just seems like a big job for one person.
Yeah, we can certainly use that.
Yeah, it's, it's a major question that we need to know, I, we're going based on historical needs, and there's a indication that we need to move forward with more than...
How would we know that, find that information?
Bruce would probably talk to Francis and talk to the one, talk with the One Planet person about the, the, the needs and what goes on in that...
Talk to the programming there.
I'm wondering, does the Rochester person take care of the grounds, because Francis doesn't take care of the grounds?
Yes, they do to the grounds, we have all the fields out back and...
Yeah, because we have somebody else that takes care of the grounds.
Right, that's the contractor.
Francis takes care of the building. Right, and we had a conversation that we would like to look into, which is going to be a better bang for our buck, to get a contractor to come in and do all the mowing and, and everything, maybe a... Yeah, well, I'm thinking that's why his is lower, is because he doesn't do the grounds and the building.
And we want him to be focused inside, not necessarily worrying about the grounds.
Go ahead, Leslie.
And I think this has been addressed before, but line twenty-six, um, did we hire her, her, we had talked about, we added one days and we're going to add to her, um, her income, I didn't know if that was the added income. Yes, we did.
We've added ten days to her.
Right.
I didn't know if that, because I don't have a favor with it. I'm sorry, I might have answered that incorrectly, I don't, I'm not sure if we gave her a raise, but she did get...
She can still work more hours.
Correct.
And get paid from, and get paid for those, those days.
It's the same amount that we've here.
You've got to understand, there's a support staff contract that has been negotiated, and when that's finally implemented, which will be July one, there will be an, an increase for, uh, all the, all the staff, all the support staff in this year. So, it's not a question of...
It's always just in proportion, that's all.
Well, this is something we negotiated for eighteen days to try to get to, and all of them will be lifted, so...
So, we're adding ten days to the Stockbridge admin, but no increase in salary?
We are...
Well, it should be ten more days, it should be eighty more hours at her hourly rate.
There will also be an increase of the salary because of the negotiated contract.
We did.
This is the same salary.
That's what I'm looking at.
Well, yeah, because I saw in, do you have those boxes around your numbers anymore, of what, what, how it got calculated?
Ten, ten extra days?
That ten extra days for the administrative assistants in Stockbridge?
I certainly don't, I do not go back and compare it to...
I did not compare it, but I do remember while we were there, we saw, um, the box and, right, right, I calculated it out.
It's a thousand eighty-three dollars, roughly.
Okay. I just, I don't have my own...
I know it's the same as March twenty-second, I don't know when we added it in.
We did add it in by the, on that day, by that date, before that date. Okay.
So, how does this budget, budget reflect education priorities between schools? I mean, you say we're meeting that, or...
March eighth, it was still the same, when did we add it in?
Um, maybe David can take a look.
David?
We're just verifying that increase in the, um, salary for the administrative assistant for Stockbridge, we want to make sure that, I guess the question's maybe when it got added in, or just to verify that...
It is added in.
That it is added in.
It's about a thousand more dollars.
All right, it's about that.
But the idea of a raise is going to be taken care of by the support staff.
Right, 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 we're talking about the extra days, though, Bruce.
Right.
Jenny's saying that the number hasn't changed since March. So, if the, if ten more days have been added, there should have been, you know, a thousands of dollars in there.
For line fifty-five, this is title one, generally the instruction remedial.
I'm not sure Ethan's question was answered, was it?
Oh, it's only the matter of how are our children being educated. It's only the matter of how are our children being educated.
Well, I understand the thing we're talking about, but we are, and even I'm looking at, you know, maintenance budgets and numbers here and numbers there. We're looking at visuals as opposed to, and this is Janie's point, that, that, how does this budget, how does it, well, how does this budget reflect educational education into a school?
Yeah, I think Carl started off with that. This, this doubles music in Stockbridge. It, it takes a music teacher and spreads them over both, both districts, but it doubles the amount of time in Stockbridge for music. It, it doubles the amount of guidance in Stockbridge.
Guidance, what now, .2?
It's .2 and it's going to .4.
I don't, I don't, math was a big issue?
It, it increases math by half a day.
In Stockbridge, yeah?
Half a day per week?
Does that mean...
Yes, yes. It went from a .8. So Donna Gallon is, is broken into about three different parts. She does library, she does math, and then she does a remedial section. And we, we pumped up her, her FTEs by half a day. So that, that's something else. We also doubled the amount of nursing time. Nurses on call, but now the nurse will be in Stockbridge two days a week instead of one day a week. Will also be here three days a week. So that, that increase to give more equity to that split. Now I'm missing something.
Besides, let me, besides Donna, is there any more interventionist time in Stockbridge?
Now, we talked about, we talked, well, some of the teachers have talked to me about wanting more intervention this time.
Sorry, interventionist teachers, define that for me.
A person to work with students who have been...
Having difficulties.
Difficulties because of, been found on STAR testing that they need to catch up. So they came to me with a plan. This is when we were talking about the facilities expansion and having a temporary building. And they, and, and I don't know whether Donna was speaking for the rest of the staff, but she certainly said, you know, it'd be really nice if we could get foreign language part-time and also do an interventionist part-time. But I guess, this is for the board to decide whether you want to go there. Certainly Rochester doesn't have foreign language either, so we probably, to be equitable, we probably ought to think about how that might benefit both campuses. And the interventionist thing, I'd love to see that. I just don't know whether we can afford it this year. There's a lot of intervention, or there are some intervention being done in the buildings anyway. You've got Title 1 folks, you've got Donna's FTEs in math have been pushed up a little bit. I'd love to see more. Well, we don't know. I mean, you can think it might be.
Because I know we've, we've talked about foreign language for a bit, and we've never really seen a number about that.
And I really think it's essential. I mean, our kids are going to Middlebury and Woodstock.
I agree, I just don't think it's something we can do year one. Do year one, but I think it's something we should be looking at and really have hit the ground running for year two.
Can we, can we, can I just finish here? I mean, I understand, I'm not trying to blow this budget up. I'm just getting to the priorities. I mean, I just, because Janie's made this real priority, is that this is what we should be talking about. You know, but the other things are, you know, apples and oranges or whatever between the two buildings and two campuses. But that this is really the heart and soul of it. We've never, we haven't ever seen a number. So that we know what an even .2 language person, you know, half a day of language, a day of language, something like that would be. So I'm just...
I don't know how serious you guys are in looking at that. So we haven't brought you a number, but we certainly, go ahead.
Can I just, can we, I mean, if we can't do it this year, I'd like to see the number for interventionists and the second language teacher for year two. Something that we're working on next year, looking at our budget, shaving it down and getting it for year two.
So they, the nicest, they're doing things that we have, we're starting looking for next year's budget now. That we have numbers and places and FICA and all that kind of stuff projected so that we have some idea of, once we know this system better. And obviously, we know this is the first budget and we're trying to get it down. But, but these are priorities for us.
Yeah.
My, my son has Spanish in, you know, preschool for three weeks last year. And then the woman realized it was the wrong thing they were throwing at her and stopped. And it was, and he came home every day with it. And it really, you know, I think it's, it's one of these things these days. I think we talked about mission statement too, that it's, and we have a world student or something like that in our mission statement. So I think there's no question that it's, it should be a priority. At least for me, I feel very strongly.
Oh, yeah, I do too. Especially since they're going to like Middlebury and Woodstock. The kids start and kindergarten.
Whereas people are doing it very early. And, and Megan, you've mentioned it in terms of, you know, tuition and drawing kids in from Hancock.
I've literally had a Granville parent at a birthday party in Warren tell me, ask me about our programming. And the one thing she asked was, do you guys have foreign language? And I go, well, not right now, but we're hoping in our merger and year two that we're gonna be able, I really think that's we're losing our students from Pittsville, we're losing our students from Granville and Hancock because unfortunately we're not, you know, as a larger school that can provide all those services because the budget's spread out over many towns. So what we're trying to do is very difficult. But I do think in the next year, by looking at these budgets, identifying our priorities, we will get there. I just think that we do need to know those costs, but I just don't think it's gonna happen tonight. I just think it's where we need to be identifying what other, why our kids in our valleys are leaving our community schools. Dissipating the community spirit in our entire valley. And I just think that if we can identify those needs, start to advertise properly, bring in the parents and the kids from the valley, which a lot of principals bring in, and extend invitations to tuitioning towns to get the families into our schools. I think if we can work on these goals, that we will get those students. Not all of them, but some of them. I think it's good for our valley and it's good for our schools.
There's four things that parents have spoken to me about who are trying to decide if they're leaving this year. We do have tuition students who are, who are thinking they won't be here next year. They talk about a second language that comes up pretty quickly. A quality after-school daycare program because young, these are primarily working parents and they need to have, for the youngsters.
Are they looking for daycare age or school age?
School age, school age, after-school programs. Music beginning earlier, they're looking for music starting in third and fourth grade, which is more and more schools are, are expanding into. I guess a little, there's primarily those three.
Is, is there money in here for curricula? Like if, look at a, a, a reading program, instruction reading program, instruction math program, is there, is there things for instructional tools? Anything for curriculum?
Well, I get confused when we start talking about curriculum because we have a curriculum coordinator at the SU.
How about books? Like, like, from what I understand, there's no real structured reading program in either school continuous from kindergarten, I believe, but from kindergarten to sixth. What if we, one of the things we decide is we want to do a tier thing with kids, multi-age, and a structured reading program? Is there money in the budget?
To buy books?
To buy books.
There is not enough money in there to buy a reading program K through 6. There's some money in there. And one of the things I hope to do with the Rochester board is because the current Rochester board, we look like we're having a surplus at the end of the year. Teachers told me that they were prepared to buy a, a writing program and some reading materials last year. But we're told in September that that was something they could not do, so they didn't order it. So we're hoping to get the, some of those materials out of the surplus from this year, Janie.
Courtney.
I would like to have that, that a structured line item in a budget from now on. I mean, if you can't do it...
Yeah.
So, so when you say curriculum, that means curriculum tools? Is it really sort of curriculum tools?
Yeah, structural tools.
Structural tools, it's not curriculum development, it's curriculum tools.
Yeah. And that would be different than the supplies and periodical books.
Isn't that, you don't know? What's line 156 then, Bruce?
What line?
Sorry?
How much would those, I mean, that seems like should be priority number one. So how much does those, do those things cost?
So do we have any idea what the expenses, at least $10,000?
Well, you could, on a, on a kindergarten, a sixth grade reading program, if you wanted to, you know, do the whole thing, you could easily spend $12,000, $15,000 getting on those materials.
Well, that seems like a priority.
With the professional development.
I, I think, Joanna, this is something that, it's not if we look at this, it is a when, because I think our teachers need to sit down, we need to go over the research and what's best practice.
Get the right place.
What programs work, so I think it's gonna, we need to do that.
We want to pick the right program.
Right.
We want to pick the right program.
And that means you have to look at the evidence and the data in order to do that, not just, hey, doesn't this...
Throw a number, throw money at it and say we need to do this.
So we're making, we're making a list of what we want on the budget for next year.
Right. What is, what is, what is line 156? It says curriculum, improvement of instruction dash curriculum.
This is the work, I believe, that goes on with Maryonne Simmons and Rochester and Stockbridge's portion of proficiency work that they're doing and, and other things. It's $15,000. Maryonne Simmons is our curriculum coordinator for the SU. And she is, and Shirley Ferguson are, are working with Rochester and Stockbridge's teachers on proficiency.
So, so this $9,000 is not driven by our, our administration? This $9,000 is our share of a program that the SU is passing down to us around, around proficiencies or whatever?
I see $15,000 there.
Line 156?
160.
Okay, that's tuition reimbursement for, for training. How do you get 156?
155.
Yeah, 9,003.
For, for improvement of instruction.
David, could you confirm that line 155 is an SU assessment? 155.
Ideally, the way that should work is the curriculum director should work with the teachers.
That is an assessment. He just verified that, that's an SU assessment.
Ideally, to follow up on, on Janie's point, that the curriculum director for, let's say, for example, language arts in the district should work with the Stockbridge and Rochester teachers on looking at the data.
Yeah.
What do our kids need? What are evidence-based programs? Janie said not just programs with pretty fixtures. Sometimes teachers pick programs for other reasons that are just as unrelated to student achievement. We really need to look at the two or three evidence-based programs and say, this is the one we're gonna commit to for the next three to five years. We're not gonna jump in.
Right, but there's, but I, I was trying to get a handle on, because we, you know, you were talking about curriculum and there is a line item that directly assesses us for improvement of instruction dash curriculum. And I was trying to understand if that was money that was for our administration to use as it saw fit or if that was a program, that was our share of a program for the SU. And that's, that's, that's our share of a program.
Yeah, I, I think in the past, people, schools have acted pretty much on their own to adopt series and, and decide on what they want. And I'm trying to get away from it and try to move together on some things.
Also, in the statutes, if you look at the statute, it says that the Aister Presley will provide curriculum coordination and the services. Some of the things that people don't like the supervisor here to do, it's often the things that are in statute that are required to be done. I think it's important to understand the context in which we work. And it's not Bruce sitting there saying, I think we'll grab some more of the board's money from Stockbridge. There's a requirement in statute, I think, you should be aware of what that is.
Right, right, I, I was trying to understand. Again, we've often had money for some curricular flexibility when, you know, they're, when it's getting support, local support, much like we have that, that $6,000 that was previously indicated as being special support for Rochester for their, or for the district, for the STAR 360 data coaching. For example, that's not a curriculum addition. You said that's only in, in, in our district. And that's what I, I was trying to find if the line, two lines above it for curricular improvement was also just in our district and money we could, we could deploy as we saw fit or if that was money that, that was already deployed on our behalf. And the answer is it's been deployed on our behalf. I find I'm correct.
And I think as our two campuses come together, teachers would welcome an opportunity to get together around curriculum. And they would, they would, there's huge benefits to doing it collaboratively. When something works, you're celebrating together. When something doesn't work, you sit down and figure out why is it that this group of youngsters is not progressing the way that we'd like them to progress? So I think, I think we're right for doing that work next year.
Um, I would, I mean, I'm torn because, you know, we're very close and we've already extended several weeks. But it feels like in some ways, we're actually now talking about some of our heart and soul issues. And we now sort of understand some of the trades we're talking about. One would hate to say it, but, you know, I support the full music and the selection, but if it's, are we talking music versus language? And what's the weight on the scale there of music versus language? Or music versus intervention? And I think that's the kind of thing we have to look at. And maybe, maybe Carl, you say, maybe that's, maybe that's after we've got the hall and the, the single number done and if that's it, fine. If that's something we can, you know, what is it, borrow, teach the people?
I think we, I love all this. I think that we can't change everything this next year. I think we need to kind of go forward with this conversation and, and get this right. Like, I want this curriculum that they're talking about, but I don't want to just jump in and get the wrong one. I want my teachers to talk.
But I do think that one of the things we can talk about is, is, is music worth second language? I think that is right today.
Well, what second language would you go for? What second language?
But Amy, but do you understand my point? You said, I do think that is, that is germane to this budget.
And I know, and I remember...
In the, in the, in the, you know, people are gonna ask us a lot about that. And I'm just saying, well, and Carl laid it out very nicely, what we did decide for. I'm also, you know, this is a crash course in budgeting, what we've gone through, I've gone through the last three months. And so I'm now starting to understand that it isn't just about, let's get to the last number. That it is about big decisions that we're making, and these are the really profound decisions, which are the ones that affect our children and what they're actually getting day to day in the classroom.
I don't remember exactly, but I believe in both our community surveys, I believe STEM and I think foreign language was another one that was on there that people were interested in.
I think we should go back and take a look at our surveys to really identify.
And Stockbridge's teachers have said they don't want more art. They want intervention. They don't want more art, don't give more art.
And they're not getting any more art.
Well, if they don't, if there was a choice, they want the intervention. Well, if there was a choice, they want the intervention.
I think what drives this whole discussion is really student achievement. I think the board needs...
Yes, it should.
I think you might be surprised if you looked at our student achievement results. So I think it starts out with looking at student achievement, and then the board setting some very clear goals for what they want, Bruce, myself, the other principals in the district, the teachers, to build into a budget. Because a budget is only the implementation of your philosophy. It's all it is.
And we barely had a chance to even think about philosophies. It's all good numbers, numbers and what's...
Because you have to get a budget adopted so the schools can operate next year. But I think it's never too early. I don't think spring is too early for the board to start looking at your surveys, as Janie said, and, or Jenny said, I'm sorry. Start looking at your surveys. Start pulling out, what are our goals next year? Because if you really want STEM, and you really want second language, and you really want to stay under the excessive spending cap, and we only have under, say we have twenty kids, then something has to go. We need to have defined our priorities.
I'm thinking about it, guys, what do we know about the Newton School? I have no idea what it looks like. All I know is that they have high student achievement. And I know about the school in New Orleans, again, I have no idea about anything except that they have high student achievement. If we can get that, then the schools of choice will come to us.
Yeah, I think, I think what you should plan on doing is have a retreat in the spring, and you begin to talk about all these ideas and how can we do this? What's most important to you? And I think you need some time with each other and with the community to try to figure it out.
Getting through this.
Well, I mean, I don't discount, we're operating on, and I hate to keep saying this, but the strategic plan we developed, and that's got an awful lot of philosophy things in it about where we should be going as a system. And so I would say, you know, that should be one of your resources as you're having these conversations, because there's an awful lot in it. But I think it's healthy. You have to keep talking about student achievement and education for the kids and not get, I know you have to worry about boilers and plumbing and all that, but we should be having a discussion every time you meet about student achievement and instruction.
I think that's what I'm sort of waking up to, is from your emails, Janie, that you've been pushing this so much that it finally sort of hit me tonight. And maybe it's just an education moment, it doesn't have to affect our numbers at all right now, tonight, and we can go forward, but I really, it's like ding, I get it now. You know, I get that that's what we need to be doing.
Effective boards have discussions about student achievement and instruction all the time, every meeting.
I went in the way of now, the students, they get the report, the school gets a report of the STAR 360 every time it's given.
Well, you should, you know, we didn't do that, and it's been done here before, it just kind of...
Because how are we to know?
It was in the newspaper because they publicized it, because their scores are so good.
Well, I think, so we're learning. I mean, some of you have been doing this for a while, but many of us are brand new to this process, and this is how we learn.
Part of Newton's success has been a very, very well-vetted writing program that they've had for a number of years. A lot of writing instruction and workshops with their teachers, and that filters right on down to the kids and the way they write every day. And that is one of the really important things when you're testing, even math testing. If you can't read problems and come up with some kind of logical way of figuring it out, you know, if you don't have the writing skills, it's a real big indicator whether you're going to be successful academically later on. So that is one of the things that Newton has done for a long, long time, and everybody, everybody works on it.
What, do they do writing workshops?
They had, one of the facilitators lived in town, and she, two of them actually spent eons of time with their teachers. So everybody that comes there learns the techniques, and it's very well ingrained, and it's been going on for fifteen, twenty years or so. And they also have a community of folks, you know, that work at Dartmouth, and it's a, you know, the community, those folks, you know, come, they take their kids to museums, and I don't want to sound like I'm highfalutin' here, but that's, you know, that we, the kids get a lot of exposure to, you know, worldly things, and it's, you know, they do well. Kids do real well.
That should make a difference, and we can't make...
A couple things. First of all, I want to loop back, Jenny brought up the point that it didn't look like the salary of the office assistant in Stockbridge had changed. I went back through old budgets, it has not. As of this money that was added, it was still the thousand dollars or whatever, thousand eighty-six, you said?
Yeah, that was rough, though.
That was, but the money is not shown in the budget. It's, that number is the same number as it was over a month ago. Yeah, I paged back through some, doing that. The other point I would think, I mean, I'll go back to what I asked. What's that?
Question number twenty-seven thousand sixty-seven.
Okay, so you have changed it. Good. Thank you. The other piece that...
What was a thousand dollars?
When we talked about, like, increasing guidance and increasing music at Stockbridge, the question was, was there, would the schedule allow it? Was there, was there, was there time and purpose in doing that, and would it be beneficial? And the discussion was, was, yeah, I wonder, I mean, just off the top of your head, if you said, we found the thirty thousand dollars to hire a point four, a foreign language person, could we put that into the schools? I mean, is that something that even at this date, there would be, there would be the ability to plan for? I mean, or do we need to have a planned full cycle to say, here's how it's going to be, and here's how language is going to fit in with things? Because I always worry that every specialty you add takes away from general education, and I don't know what's been done in planning the daily schedule, the weekly schedule, and so on. I'm not, you know, is this even something that could be done effectively for this next year?
But it's done in other schools, and I'm sure we could figure out how to work it in.
As far as the schedule goes, that, Mary Ellen Simmons, our curriculum person, and Shirley are talking with the teachers there, or that's the plan, basically, to work on that schedule. They had three different renditions of the schedule in Stockbridge, and they're looking at, you know, trying to work it out, so that... And Rochester as well.
We don't have the extra person to do the math, and we'd be looking at different schedules.
Right, but I mean, I mean, you know, the question was brought up and saying, well, is it, you know, could we have, could we have a world language program that sets something our community's value? What I am asking is, assume we find the money, you know, we don't have to worry about, you know, we get a teacher for free, we win a teacher in the lottery. Could we, I mean, is that something that could be integrated and done, or would it, I mean...
Well, I would like, I would like to jump at the opportunity to do, to do a second language. I think, however, if we're going to do it and do it well, we need to have a bit more time to plan. Because second language, it needs to be a whole part of what's going on in the school. It can't just be thirty minutes twice a week. It's not going to be...
Right, everything I've seen about world language instruction at elementary school, it's holistically integrated into everything, so that one day they may be getting a math language, a math language in Spanish.
Exactly.
And the next day, they may be ordering food in the cafeteria in Spanish, or just doing things, and there's kind of, it's more immersive. And I question whether we could, you know, if we could, even if we could find it in the budget tonight, would that be something that we would actually implement well next year? Or would it be...
My initial response would be, we would do it better if we took a year to plan it. I don't think we would do it horribly, but I don't think we would do it as well as we would...
New kids coming in.
And oh, by the way, if people are hard to find. So especially, especially if you're doing two days a week, you know, folks not hanging on trees.
I was going to say, I think what, it's a certification that you need to be a foreign language teacher. There did not used to be any certification in Vermont. I don't know if there's now.
Is there one, any L.A. licenses now?
There didn't used to have to be any.
I think there's licenses now.
Has it changed? I have little idea, so I'd like to talk to you another time about that. But as Bruce said, folks, foreign language teachers are hard to find, so if we were ready to do it, we need to do it on both campuses.
Yes, we do.
Yeah. And try and make it a full-time position.
It's huge wealth.
So basically, the answer is, let's, let's make that another goal next year.
Sharon and Stratford are trying, now, together.
Are they finding applicants?
I think, I think they have one. But there were only, but there were only, I think there were only three applicants remaining, so it's, and they've been out looking for months, so...
And it may be a little outside of the box for us, but there's a number of school districts who are hiring bilingual teachers as dear teachers.
Right.
They're not just hiring teachers to teach Spanish, they're hiring bilingual teachers.
Well, that's why we had Spanish before. Because one of our high school teachers was...
He's actually still available, he might be available, but not full-time. He does more in Spanish.
I think that is, this is, we've come up with some two goals for sure that we want...
I think we have very clear goals to try to cash out over the next year.
Is there a writing program, a structured writing program in Rochester Elementary?
And there isn't at Stockbridge.
That's what we're hoping to buy in the title funds this year.
See, so that we, neither of us, what is so critical, and writing is critical in terms of the reading/writing scenario, and neither of our schools has a writing program nor a reading program.
Is there a spelling program?
Nope.
No, no, no spelling. Now, just to be clear, youngsters are taught reading, they're taught...
I know, you want to...
I'm not saying that.
The general public is...
I just want to make sure the general...
No teaching, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying...
But it is not structured in sequential year to year.
Thank you, Bonnie.
You're welcome. I'm just getting a little nervous. Well, we don't teach spelling, we don't teach...
But there is, I mean... Yeah, there isn't that sequencing, year to year. There isn't that moving upon scale.
Please.
Do we have, have we rolled in the various technical corrections we've seen? We've got it, we have a number now?
Don't show us if it's over. We're back to the drawing.
Where's the thing you should check on the student, the seventh grader, or is he adding an F?
Our sheds were from the after-school program.
The shed was actually changed into the sound panels, Carl, the sound panels.
Yes, we put Sam sound panels due to discussion with... What line is that in?
That is it.
Because with discussions with the teachers, they said that they were preferred, right? So here's, no, here's where, here's where we're at. One of the things that David brought me up to speed on was that we have to, if you're going to bond something, it has to be warned. And you can't, you can't, you can't decide you're going to bond something from the floor. So, but what David pointed out was that there's municipal lease agreements, like for a bus, that you don't have to, you don't have to bond, so it doesn't have to be warned. What we'd like to do, because there's people that have said, let's just build onto that building. Let's just build, let's do some brick and mortar work and do that, and let's not just throw it, throw a trailer in the back of the parking lot to get something there for next year. Donna Gallant in particular was saying, let's put in some sound panels, let's improve the acoustics of that building, and let's do that.
So what's happening, like, in the cafeteria? Throw in some...
Right, I think around the, to try to, panels that go up around that mezzanine or...
Catch that up.
She sent, she sent some pictures out of what they look like.
And again, if we're now, you know, as we go forward, we're talking about other, you know, foreign language and that type of space, that might have a different need than a trailer.
Space, we have one space. We have one room.
Right, right, but the thinking is, is that we would rather...
Fix our one room.
We would rather fix that, and we would rather go forward with looking at, Barbara had started doing some architectural drawings, or got, what's the guy in Pittsfield, Carl?
Um, Rob.
You know, they, might be, yeah, I think, I think it was someone from Carl Williams' team that did some preliminary. We spent a thousand dollars or so, fifteen hundred dollars last year to do some preliminary general drawings. What I think we'd like to do is, you know, get those, look at them, and try to start having that conversation, because I don't, the general feeling, I kind of agree with it. Would you rather have a trailer next week, or would you rather build out and add a couple permanent classrooms to the building?
You know my answer, Carl.
Well, a lot of the teachers had expressed...
Don't build anything. Save all the money.
You know my answer.
Okay.
You all do.
So yes, the upshot is, is that we're fixing the space that we have, and we're looking at moving towards getting plans for more, a more permanent expansion, to have some space in that building to do things in more than just that one room.
Will we get the acoustical tiles?
Yes, those are in the budget.
Yeah, that's two, two thirty-six, what was it? No, oh, shoot. Yes, two thirty-five.
No, that's one...
Oh, it went to two thirty-six. Yeah. And again, we have to remember, this is the first year, and we are going to move forward with what, we need to get together and figure out what we both value and where we want our kids to go, and what we want to do. And we're going to continue to make steps, to make improvements. You know, I want Stockbridge to have more space. I think you're overcrowded. You know, let's figure out how we can get you more space. But let's not just make a knee-jerk reaction. Let's take time to look at it and truly evaluate what we have, what we can use. Carl and I sat and talked about what kind of technology that maybe is in this high school, we can, we can re-acquisition to our elementary school, to Stockbridge Elementary School, so we don't maybe have to buy brand-new stuff if we have some stuff that works. I mean, it's...
Or share with Stockbridge.
Well, no, we're taking, we're taking, this budget, this budget has...
All the equipment that's in this building.
This budget, right. This budget has...
Technologies, equipment, to technology, to writing, to viewers, projectors, there's something like, what, six, ten projectors in this school?
Right, no, there's, this budget has money to put a spark to, to take smart boards out of this wing of the Rochester High School, and make sure every elementary classroom in the Rochester side and in the Stockbridge side has a smart board in it. I think we've got two in Stockbridge, and I think we, so we'd be filling out, filling the rest of those classrooms out. I'm not sure how many of the elementary classrooms have smart boards in them now.
Every, all of them do, but two are not working, so...
Right, so that must have been what Mark was saying.
Right.
But the asset, we can just, we put in money for the electrician to wire them, we took out money for the, there originally was, his recommendation was some kind of mobile touchscreen, like flat-screen TV, that could be rolled around from classroom to classroom, and we felt that it was better to use, the suggestion was to use the existing smart boards that are in the high school and move them into the elementary rooms, so that every room has one, you don't have to roll something around from place to place.
And again, this is just the first year. We're going to come up with...
There's another part, there's, the middle schools, the middle school Chromebooks are moving to the Rochester Elementary School. Stockbridge is getting a new card of Chromebooks, because the laptops in Stockbridge, you know, are old.
Right, Stockbridge is getting thirty new Chromebooks.
We've looked at improving, improving the, you know, the infrastructure, you know, around the building. And again, we can, we don't have to bond, if we decide we want to do a modular classroom, and there'll be a presentation on that at the meeting, we don't have to bond it. We can do that, we can do that right away from the floor. It doesn't have to be, since it doesn't have to be bonded, it doesn't have to be warned. So the people can weigh in, and we can, we can talk about that at the annual meeting. We just don't have to make a decision about it tonight.
So, speaking of tonight, are we...
Yes, can we see where we came in with the changes? So, we go to our sheet on the back here.
So this doesn't really...
We're good, we didn't change anything?
It changed, it changed the... Changes.
Oh, I see, yes, it changed by that two thousand...
Tax rate, because we were above...
Right.
...the limited by the five percent increase, so...
So the students do it again?
Different preliminary equalized tax rate from what we had before. We're still above the level of the range, so it effectively means we, with Stockbridge, the same tax rate, over down to seventy, seventy-eight.
No, I didn't understand, it didn't change anything?
It doesn't change the tax rate, because...
Because we're within the five percent. Right, it's about the five percent.
Right. And we, so we adjusted the SAP number, we made sure that we had the seventh grader, we changed, we added the...
I didn't give you, say the seventh grader. You want to add another seventh grader?
You think if there's six, if there's only seven grader, there's stock...
Does it change their percentage?
There was six. I thought there was five, and then one.
We had, we had a lengthy discussion at the last meeting, and it was decided to leave it out. Do you want to change that now, and bring it back in?
Yeah, we're going to have, I think we're going to have a number of students coming in Rochester.
You're going to have Rochester all over the place.
We've got to take a stand somewhere.
I'd say really important, as I do my recommendation.
Does it change the percentage?
Because, you know, as Bonnie said, we're going to have students coming, you know, come and go in Rochester as well, so...
Well, that one student would put Stockbridge over the cap, but I don't think that there's very many other ones coming and going.
Would that one...
No, but if we have a...
Let's find out.
If we have students that are leaving, then we...
I've heard that one student might be leaving, but I don't know.
And you never know, people change their mind all the time.
It's the best guess, isn't it?
I don't know where this student is going.
KU A.
Well, I mean, it's...
She's going to... He would be going to Woodstock.
He's going to Woodstock.
I thought she was going to...
He is going to Woodstock. He is going to...
Okay, so it's, it's a seventh grader or Woodstock?
Sorry, I'm playing, I'll show you when I do.
Again, I think that...
That's what I'm doing, it can be KU A.
Okay, so it still keeps us under the cap, though.
For both? For...
Yes, because we're together.
I know, but he showed...
Taxes.
Could you go to the revenue, um, then, that would show the equalized spending per pupil, per campus, to make sure that we are both still under the cap, by increasing that, um, one? Already, before you add it?
After adding this.
After adding it, Stockbridge would be above the cap.
Jenny, just do the adjustment for the, actually, we're just applying.
It's not by much, I think like-
I'm looking at the forty-nine thousand dollars.
Well, that's in Rochester.
Right, right.
No, so, yes, in the real, exactly, the real grand families, yes, well, we, in our articles of agreement, we promised each town would be under the cap, or, that name.
Ironically, because we were afraid of the exact opposite of what we're looking at now. We were afraid that, when you looked at Rochester, when you teed out Rochester numbers from Stockbridge, that Rochester would still be way over the cap. That we're afraid about Los Angeles FAMs. And that Stockbridge would have to have all the cuts to cover that.
And, uh-
That's on the tuition kids next year, that makes a big difference.
I just think your student population is gonna change.
I agree. I think we should just exclude it.
As fast as you make this change, we could hear next week that somebody's coming, and somebody's leaving.
Right.
Any voice, what's the voice?
Yeah, what's the voice consensus?
You don't want to be over.
I am curious.
Right, so I'm taking them, we'll go back.
Yeah, I think we, I think we will, and I think it justified, because there are students that are gonna be coming and going. We're not gonna have the exact same population at the start of school year, or even partly through the school year.
Or two weeks from now, maybe.
Right.
You wanna take it out?
Yeah. That's my recommendation.
Do we take?
But that's just one voice.
Well, it will be over the cap if we, if we do, so-
If you don't take them out.
Right.
Exactly.
One time.
So it just means if he is there, then next year, something else will need to-
How, we moved around a little?
We moved around, yeah.
Can I just ask a little about how we make a decision here? Because I just feel like sometimes we're making decisions and not knowing that we're actually making a decision. So I think, just to make it be clear, that we're saying yes to this and no to this, it's sort of floating in, I mean, I think-
Because there's no motion that needs to be made.
What you meant, this point about how the one zone sort of got decided, was a little amorphous. And it wasn't clean and cut, and that we could say, "Yes, we're deciding this." It was sort of a map and a picture, here and picture there, and I just think, in terms of going forward, we just need to be clear about how we make a decision.
Sure.
Just so that people can know what we're making-
I think it was decided when the budget was built.
Well, it's just, we are building it right now, that's what we're doing, but I'm just saying that how we decide something's in or out, I think needs to be very clear. Because I don't feel like, we're sort of doing it by not, it's a little bit here.
Well, is there still, is there numbers that need to be fixed in the SAP coordinator line?
Yes, that's, the next rule on the schedule is not gonna affect the basic, but it does need to be ensured.
It's, okay, but it's not gonna affect the, um-
SAP.
It's not enough to change.
It's not enough?
Right.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that, how close that was. Okay, well, you know my opinion, the guys can decide.
Are you asking what that is?
No, I thought Ethan had a question, and it was completely, or a comment, it was completely ignored.
How do we get, how do we show consensus?
Right, I put my, that's my opinion. I would say that everybody should weigh in on their opinion on what they want, and we go with the, I mean, it's like voting, right?
Well, usually you call a vote.
Well, do we, I don't think in this case, we actually need to-
Well, but, but I mean, you know, you want a consensus as the chairman of the board, and a consensus of the people.
Absolutely.
How do you go about doing that? How would you go about that?
Um, I'm usually relatively, what's a better word, laissez-faire. I try to, I mean, let the conversation sort of, sort of go, and see where it sugars out, and then generally say, where, you know, ask, ask where it's parked. I think we're kind of getting to that point on this particular thing. You know, I think-
Well, what I do think happens is that we finish up the meeting, and then, you know, and then my point, but then, then there's email comments afterwards.
Right.
About things we talked about in the meeting. It makes me feel like that maybe some people weren't quite in agreement with where we went. And so I'm just trying to make sure that we're, we're moving forward as a group, and not by who's right. You know, I raised my hand a lot, I taught a lot, so, made a lot of it, but, I just want to be clear on what our process is.
Yes, and I think that, you know, we, I mean, generally, it's a straight parliamentary process, you know, we have an issue, we we take an action on it, or we don't take an action on it. I think in squishier situations like this, where you're kind of trying to talk something through, and sort of herd the cats towards, towards a particular place, the process becomes more nebulous. I think it's important to clarify, for example, that this budget is built, assuming that that one zone is being heated in the high school. We're, we're not, you know, that's, that, all the details of that, and what the savings are, haven't been, been worked out. So I think my point is, is that sometimes we confuse a statement like, "The budget's made expecting this," with, "Okay, that means we're going to do that." You know, and I think there's that, I think, I think there's, there's that part of it, you know, that-
I mean, don't get me wrong, if everybody else is fine with this, you know, the way the decision's made. I just, I just, I just hear Joanne's point, that it wasn't a clear decision that we were going with one zone.
It obviously was at the SU, because that's where the budget started.
It was, it was, it happened somewhere, and I'm, I'm not exactly sure.
And you didn't even realize.
Well, I mean, I had a, I had a, I had a guess, but I wasn't, because I saw a picture, and I saw the logic thing, and then it went from there.
Right.
And why did you go to the elementary?
But I, but I guess that's, that's the kind of thing that is just, I want to make sure I know when I'm making a decision. And so that, and so that everybody else knows when we're making a decision on something.
Right.
So that it's just, because it's clean, clean, and it's good for, it's good for the people.
We toured the elementary, which is double the size of our elementary school. I thought maybe the decision would be made last, after the tour, because it was even on the, um, the list of things to talk about. It was never talked about. It was skipped, completely.
So, so it's, it's-
It's done now. Obviously, you've decided.
Well, 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 so, no, we've got a budget that, that-
But when did that get decided?
Um, it gets decided when the budget gets passed or not passed.
But we've gone through all the numbers of using a zone in this building. And that was never questioned, so obviously, that's, that's kind of not fair to the voters in Stockbridge, I don't think. It was never discussed in public. And when we heard, when we were offered this idea back in August, September, whenever it was, that was written in there. Jenny even read it.
Yeah, that was, that was the, the previous Rochester's principal said very, very clearly that she thought, she thought that you could, you could run, you could run the elementary school in just that building.
And when we toured that building-
The current Rochester principal says different.
And when we toured that building, I got the sense that all three of the Stockbridge board members felt that it absolutely is adequate. All of you were making comments about that. So when did that change?
The elementary building is bigger than yours.
It's huge.
We know that, it just is the way it is, though. It's, not that I built it, and you built the Stockbridge.
No, but you have so much room.
So our question, actually, the question is very specifically directed to the Stockbridge board.
Yes.
I do agree that Rochester is twice as big in Stockbridge, and that, that the Rochester Elementary, if rearranged, could fit into the Rochester Elementary. I think for year one, I don't think that we have enough time to do that. I think that if Bonnie talked about, you know, there may be Hancock-Grandville students that leave, I think if Rochester doesn't get the four hundred thousand dollars in revenue, then this, that zone is gonna have to close, because they're not going to afford it.
Does anybody-
I don't know, Jenny, now. I think this is a question not if, but when. I think that we don't have enough time
Right, so why-
To see how to reconfigure, because it comes in below the cap.
Well, yeah, it's a good thing you're all three, I'm sorry. Please, let him speak, yeah, let him speak. This is the first, this is what you asked for.
Because we are coming in below the cap, and I do believe that this first year, I don't want to lose the tuition students. And, and let's work through it. We have no idea how to do it any other way right now, because we, let's not make a rash decision. And I was one who looked at that elementary and said, "Well, we could do this, and we could do that."
And we could, but we need to-
And we could, but, yes, exactly. We need to look at it, and we need to see exactly how much we save if we do close a certain thing. But I don't think we should rush into it this much.
Five years, Stockbridge kids will be here. That's my prediction.
It's in your Articles of Agreement, clearly stated that your town will have to vote to close your school, in your town.
Yep.
That was put in there by a Rochester person, knowing that your situation is very different from where we are in Stock, Rochester. We understand that. That is, that Article of Agreement is something that-
Is a joke, because we're not following it at all.
Just let her finish.
We are not following it at all.
Wait, no, 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 I don't think, I think we need to settle down, just take a breath.
Jenny, so you feel that what she said, I'm just asking-
I think that at this time, I don't think that we have time to fully evaluate it. I think that closing two zones in the high school is a good step in the right direction. Even reconfiguring the elementary school, there'd be a little, you know, it's not gonna be a very big cost, and it's not, I think, I do obviously agree with you that in Stockbridge, that that was the impression, that the high school's closing. I'm not saying that it's fair, that it is staying open, but I think at this time, I think that in year one, it's just the way that the cards are dealt.
Carl, did you have, Chris, she asked for the Stockbridge.
It doesn't matter, it's four to two. It doesn't matter.
I think that, I think that we're making a really big step in terms of, in terms of getting this shut down. My concern is that just closing the doors, to close the doors, um, isn't necessarily the best way to do things. And I also think that the, that the Stockbridge voters and the Rochester voters have the annual meeting as their time to weigh in. And if the Stockbridge meeting-
Twice as many voters, and you know it.
That's twice as many taxpayers, though.
Well, I think, I think what she'd like to see is, um, somebody come in and see what the reconfiguration could be.
Right, and we're going to do that. That's, that, the point is-
Are you hearing about, are you hearing about time?
It's time, it's gonna take time.
It's just, and we're just, so many things, literally months, we've had, we got our first budget six weeks ago, two months ago, I don't remember. And, and so, you know, we're, we're in this place, and, well, we have to make a call. And I'm glad, I'm glad you guys spoke up. But I do believe that we've never actually spoken about it on camera in the minutes.
We've never had even a moment to have conversations.
No, 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 I know, well, we got, we got, kept getting blindsided by numbers, and, and not getting to some of the, you know, the real discussion.
But this is our first ten, yeah.
Well, I know, no, no, I'm saying, I'm saying-
I know you won, that's what you're saying.
So I'm saying, this is how we learn.
Ah, exactly.
Well, I think the solution, a solution-based process is, we need the time to do it. Yeah, I think that's kind of changing the verbiage around a little bit, maybe.
I agree.
Are you more from Stockbridge or Stockford? Okay, good.
That was in our proposal, is that we were supposed to move, find an efficiency over a period of time that we're comfortable with.
So part of your retreat, and you're discussing your retreat about how you're gonna do this.
But I, I understand, you know, what she's saying, but, you know, I also, I just lost my high school. And I don't, you know, I'm not getting emotional about that.
I had that discussion with one of the other parents the last time.
Yeah, it's-
And I said, you know, "The Stockbridge kids are so excited to go to their school of choice."
Yeah.
And I said, "The Rochester kids, all of a sudden, can't go to their high school."
Yeah.
Because that's-
It's a huge change.
It needs to be spoken
Yeah.
That way. Because I got myself, caught myself getting caught up in a couple of things, and I kind of, I try to be solution-based in my life, instead of just complaining. And I think, when I took a step back and tried to look at it, "So how do I fix this?"
Right.
That's what I came up with, is saying things, I think you said at one point softly, to voters. And I think that's kind of, and I think Stockbridge has to realize that these kids aren't going to their high school.
And this is a brand-
And where, but I think also the Rochester kids have to start being told, "You get to go to your school of choice."
And, and we'll get there.
And it's all, it's all of us kind of softening our verbiage of saying
Yeah, exactly.
Solution, solution-wise, instead of just, "I want it now." I think your words, I think your words are so wise, because the bottom line is, and I can say this because I'm the outsider, okay, I've been here, what, three months? I really don't have anything vested on whether this building closes, Stockbridge closes, that zone closes. I really don't. I think, I think the job of this board, in communities and myself, is to, is to, every decision we make, the last question we have to ask is, "How is this good for kids?" And we're all seeing declining in Roma. We're gonna, there are only gonna be harder decisions ahead of us, there aren't gonna be easier decisions ahead of us. But if we say to every question, "How is this good for kids?", we really won't go too far afield. We just won't. But the softening of the language is what has to happen.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, people withdraw, and they don't want to share their thoughts anymore. And they just think, "Jenny's become the enemy, Amy's the enemy, I'm the enemy." And it's really not that. It's just, how do we do the best for our kids? In all you are. Yeah, I don't believe that.
I'll be the enemy.
In a way, in a way that our community, in a way.
Um, so, so we need to, I think we made a call on tonight, yeah, are we there?
Yes, we're there. Yes, we're there.
Now, can we, can we, um-
Wait, you gotta let your rest decide if they're there or not.
Right, right.
I guess the question that we're at is to-
I don't know if you're there.
To eliminate Stockbridge's name.
Oh, me? I didn't hear that from me.
No, that was very far.
So, what do you have tonight?
So, to eliminate Stockbridge from being over the cap, I would recommend that we remove the one person that-
I think we did that.
We just put in.
Do we do that, David?
Because if they come, I think it'll be fine, and we will find other efficiencies. We're working together now, and really, this budget is going to pay for four campuses. Um, I know we are promising to show separate, and that's what we're gonna do.
Yes.
But I think we can make it, on the island. So I guess I'd like to make a motion that we accept this budget, final budget number as presented. The number, David, is?
Actually, I think we need to accept, we need to do a warning, right?
I'm gonna accept the budget for sure.
Accept the budget, you gotta put the budget up as a warning.
It's gotta rule on that.
Can I take comment on the, on the-
No.
That was Jeannie.
Please, don't ask my job.
I think people are perhaps misinterpreting the agreement when it comes to being over the cap or under the cap. Because they were not, I suspect, correct me if I'm wrong, but I suspect that people were not including the fund balance carried forward as part of that cap. So if you look up here, it's a negative eighteen thousand, so going into fiscal nineteen, that means at the end of fiscal sixteen, there was a deficit in Stockbridge of eighteen thousand. That's part of the expense that puts them over the cap. If you take out that starting fund balance of a negative deficit to pay off, now, I don't know what they were thinking of when they wrote the agreement, but it's possible they were not considering that feature, to put that in for information purposes.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I mean, I, to give you history, Dave, the, the, the reason to separate that number out is there's great concern that with the, the FAM students that had been allowing Rochester to have somewhat of an easier time balancing a budget, with those going away, that there, that there would be, uh, that there would be not as much resources given to Stockbridge as were given to Rochester, because the, the, the previous situation of the FAM students and the artificially low tuition versus expenses. Um, so-
Pick up the emotion, I'm talking about, because the-
Right.
Whether they, whether they think or don't.
No, it was included. It was the bottom line that we were talking about. It was whatever, everything in, bottom line.
Right.
Let's make sure that Stockbridge isn't funding Rochester.
And the funny thing is, is that, is that the hypothetical situation we're looking at with, you know, as you said, saying, "Well, let's look at these students at this moment", it's the other, it becomes the other way around. Um, Rochester is pulling Stockbridge under the cap.
Right, you're looking at a one point six in Rochester, a one point five in Stockbridge, and, uh-
What's our, what's our number?
So that number's open. Do we not take him out?
Is he, is the student in or out?
Out.
Student, if we decided the student is out.
We decided the student is out.
Have you taken this student to show to the board?
I'll give you one second, I wanted to debate.
Yes, we, we, we agreed to take him out.
There you go. There you go, he's out.
He's out.
Yes, now he's out.
Because he never, yeah, he's out.
He's out, so if you could adjust that so we're below the cap, we can make a motion. Okay, so-
So we're still over the cap.
So what changed in Stockbridge on your paper here versus what you handed out tonight that pushed Stockbridge above the cap?
You wanted, you insisted on saving the principal's health insurance, jumping across-
Okay, so you moved that health insurance, okay.
I expect that, certainly contributing to it.
Okay.
We did forty-sixty and it'll be under.
Yeah. Didn't, did you, when you approached, when you, when you, when you put that, did you put it forty-sixty or did you put it just even, even?
I heard the board say even, even.
Yes, we did say that.
So actually, we're just gonna-
Oh.
And I explained-
So the zero should be on logic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Then that actually gets us over the cap. That doesn't even hurt.
I, I wasn't gonna mention that, I was just gonna sit here quietly.
I'm not even the accountant, I can figure that out.
Well-
How about we go back and do it the way it was, with the health insurance?
Sure.
Just be sure to explain that at the annual meeting, have your backup ready.
Yeah, well, we're, we're gonna have, I mean, we're gonna, no, I know, before we go to the annual meeting, we're gonna have to do a lot of sitting down and talking.
We could do a July one, we could do a rehearsal.
Well, I'm saying, we have a lot of things to do between the two of us. And the other thing is, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna face, we're gonna face this and more at the meeting.
Absolutely.
You're gonna be able to answer the questions, you're gonna know-
Well, I'm saying, we will, but I'm just saying, we need to-
And with the motions get going and it gets tough.
But, but we prepare, you know, that, that's the thing, is we need to prepare ourselves that this is going to be a tough meeting. It's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of people out there with just one, one axe to grind, and they're gonna go for it. So, let's, I, I, I make a motion that we move the health insurance back where it was for this budget to be, for this budget that we're looking at tonight to be under the cap for Stockbridge. All in favor, can you raise your hand? Do you understand we're moving the health insurance back?
Yes.
The way it was. Okay. Good, so we're going to do that, David.
David.
Thank you.
He got it. Although I actually really wanna be a total motion.
Now, do we approve the budget?
Well, now, now we just-
Now, can we make sure that, that both Rochester and Stockbridge individually are under the cap, collectively are under the cap, and our tax rate is, um, under the five percent cap as well at-
As the criteria we set for accepting this number, we have to make sure that it's in place.
Is it big enough to see?
Yes.
Yeah?
Thank you.
And so the, the total spending is the, uh, the, 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 the budget is four, two, five, one, four, nine, four?
That's correct.
Four, two, five, one, four, nine, four. All right, I'd like to make a motion to accept this budget of four, two, five, one, four, nine, four.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the budget for the total expenditure of four million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars. Discussion? Hearing that we've had enough discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I can't vote.
So the budget, the, the, the-
I was about to vote, realized.
Tom, good, you've been telling me.
Tell me again.
Okay, so, we have a, we have a warning. Do you take a look at?
Yes, I don't think, yes, I don't think it's a rule.
I've probably looked at this version, I looked at the previous one we had.
Yeah, you said that. So we did, so the number, is the number correct?
I don't think it is.
So what's the warning for now? This is for our-
David, can you go back to the number, because the number, we need to write it in.
I will speak to the warning if I get a chance to speak.
Sure. Okay, now that we've got the warning, uh, go ahead, David.
So what I prepared was based on what existed before we came to the meeting. In addition, so there's the article on the budget amount to be warned, there's also an article there on a tax anticipation note or an, an ability to, uh, take out a loan in advance of receipt of tax payments, because towns don't typically collect taxes and pay taxes on July one, there's a time lag, and the salaries and various other expenses have to be paid. So there's a, a lending article, and then there are three additional articles that are provided, and you can just scratch them out, and I can print out a new one if you don't want them. This is language which was prepared by our attorney for another district that wanted to establish three reserve funds. You may want to establish one, two, three, or zero. And whatever your choice is, I just wanted to have it available for you, so that if you wanted it, you've got vetted legal language for a warning about a reserve fund. And the purpose of the reserve fund, of a reserve fund, for those who may not be familiar with it, is that in the absence of a reserve fund, if there is a surplus in a given fiscal year, there's a legal requirement under statute that that money be returned to the taxpayers in the next available budget, which typically, so in fiscal eighteen, on, in June thirtieth this year, if we have a surplus in any of the districts of, say, a hundred thousand dollars, that money must be returned to the voters in the twenty-twenty budget as a res- as, as an equivalent of a revenue. If there's no, if there's no vote, of the voters, not of the board, but of the voters, to create and to fund, you have to create and then you have to vote to fund it also. So what this provides for is, A, the creation of a fund, that what it does, it provides a creation. So if, if there is an interest on the voters to not only create the fund, but also to put money in it, then that needs to be a separate vote. So one of the considerations is what happens at the end of fiscal eighteen? Another consideration is what happens in any existing reserve funds? So if any of the districts have a reserve fund for tuition or whatever, you want me to stop, I'll stop.
No, I was, I was, you said any district had a reserve fund, I was waving my hands, saying, Stockbridge has the ability to reserve.
So, the terms of the agreement, which are still valid despite other opinions to the contrary, one of the terms of the, of the agreement is that all the assets and liability of the districts that are merging become the assets and liabilities of the district that's being formed. So that means a reserve fund potentially, well, is, it becomes an asset, but the question is, if there's no pot to put that money in, it can't be used until a pot is created. So this is creating that pot.
This is creating the, taking the money from the existing power.
So it's not taking the money, it's creating a pot, so that when voters say, when voters allow it to go across, then it has a pot to go into.
Right, so the Stockbridge building reserve, um, we would, you need to use that same language, that it's building reserve, or does this board have the ability to say, okay, now we want that to be a, I don't know, ground maintenance or do something?
Or it could be that, or it could be a building reserve for Stockbridge.
Okay.
So we could have separate building reserves for the different school buildings, or for the, for the first and second grade in this elementary school, or for some, something very specific. So as long as the voters agree to the language of the, of the terms of the reservation, it can be set up for that purpose.
Um, the big thing, the, the, the big issue I think would be that we would want to probably have campus-based reserve funds, because that way, you know, they're, 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 they're not, they're not feeling that everything's being, you know, uh, I mean, one of the reasons that we did, that we, that we did not put money from the trust, money from the trustees of public funds into this budget is the concern that, you know, those funds were set aside, uh, years ago for the, for the Stockbridge central, for the, for the Stockbridge School District, it says in the request, for the Stockbridge, uh, uh, one of the Stockbridge public funds. I'm not sure what the, the exact language is of the Rochester public funds, but they're, they're there. And our thinking had been that we were just not gonna open that can of worms in this particular budget cycle, and we would just let the trustees of public funds keep their funds and invest them and roll them over, and we, we would, we, well, we, we had some, some more discussion and, and, and figured out a way that the communities would support to, 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 to pull from those and use them for the students like they're, they're supposed to be used. Um, we would do that, but we weren't gonna do that this, this, this year. So my question would be, number one, if we, if, we either need to make separate campus building reserve funds, because the only, the only, we don't have a tuition reserve in Stockbridge, nor do we have a unified governance reserve, we only have a building reserve, and you're not sure if you-
I'm not sure, only from what I know through the Articles of Agreement, I thought we did not have any reserves.
I didn't think you did either, but I wanted to make sure that we're something that-
Now, going forward though, if we, if our board wanted to, to create a, a buildings, a, a, a joint reserve fund for our new budget, when our new fund balance comes, is that need to be taken care of here as well, or can that, should that wait for another year?
You can do that another year. We, 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 we established ours, and we just had a surplus, we're like, we should put money in, we know that our boiler was dying. So we, 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 you know, we identified the surplus in the, in the budget, that we had an article that said we wanted to put this much of the surplus, you know, this much of the surplus in.
You're likely to have a surplus this year. I'm not sure if Stockbridge does, but Rochester, we're hearing, probably will.
It'd be good to have a building reserve fund.
Right, I just think, I just think it's important that at least for, for, for creating them now, we know, we'll probably, I mean, even if there's, there's talk at Stockbridge about getting the, getting the generator finally and using our building reserve to do that, um, we, you know, we will, once we get, once we, these meetings, I'm sure we'll, we'll decide, we'll, we're talking to do about that, but I think it's important that we are establishing, one, they, they, they're, they're separate.
I mean, two, two points. One, um, just, and this is just emotional, looking at these four articles after we do the basic budget, feels like we're asking for it to put, I'm, I'm still trying to understand what David's saying, and I'm sure it makes a lot of sense, and it's sort of, but just in the middle of the meeting to instruct us just sounds complicated. Two is, can Stockbridge use its reverse reserve fund even after the merger, as we've taken over the merger?
If we've set up a fund-
So we have to do this.
Right?
To do, to get that.
Because otherwise-
So the new board has to sell a Stockbridge-only reserve fund.
Okay, what happens if we do not?
It has to be done through this.
What happens to that money if we do?
Then we need to get a legal opinion of that, but my interpretation would be that the money is in limbo until, until the courts decide.
Okay, so, uh, if, if, so-
Well, the, and the third option to be, to, to, to be accurate is also that the current Stock, if the, if the current Stockbridge board spent that building reserve fund on, on appropriate use, um-
Before you merge.
Before the, before the-
Before June.
Yes.
Okay.
That would, that would take care of it as well. I mean, I, I lean towards what Ethan is saying, that, you know, uh, we can make a, we can make a reserve fund when we have a, when we have a surplus to, to, to stick into it. Right now, there's no, you know, we're not, we're not funding, we're, we're establishing accounts that we're not funding at all with this article, correct, David?
Not correct. You, you've just said that you've got a reserve fund for maintenance in Stockbridge, so whatever exists.
Correct.
As of July one, it will be inaccessible, in my, my understanding, until we create a fund.
Correct, if it exists, if it existed July one, it would be inaccessible. But, but what I'm saying is, is that absent that reserve fund needing a place to land, or absent, and absent us not finding out that there's a Rochester reserve fund that, 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 that we're missing, these, these articles are all unfunded, are all unfunded, unfunded reserves.
Do you know how much the Stockbridge reserve fund is?
I think it was just at eighty-five, but I'm sure it's gonna be good.
It's a little bit lower.
Because I think we spent on the kitchen and such. Thank you, Bonnie.
But I think that's, I think we, I think the stuff was, was paid on the-
So, like, as Bruce was saying, at the end of this FY eighteen, Rochester possibly will have a fund balance, and do we need to set up the article now to-
No.
What?
No.
No, so the next annual meeting, we can set it up?
In March, April, or May next year, if we want to.
We can, we can call this.
And we can call a special meeting to, to set up these funds too.
Yeah, I would-
But it has to be warned thirty days in advance.
Yeah, but I would say that would be much more sense to make this standalone issue.
You know what, it would be nice if maybe we could think about warning this when you guys have found out for sure if you're gonna be able to, what you want to do with that reserve, if you're gonna spend it all down, or if you want to move it into a Stockbridge-only, um, building reserve, or move it into the whole district.
Probably we have to warn it.
Thirty days.
We'd have to warn it, yeah.
Of your spending on it?
But it doesn't have to be with this, but that would take this off, so it's not a, a, an issue at the meeting, and we could actually do, I mean, we could literally warn it for the day later or a week later. We just need to warn it for thirty days.
David, just a question, so I, I finally figured out that each one of these articles, one is for improvements and maintenance, one is for second, student secondary tuition, and one is for operational structure tuition. Um, so you have to create it, you can't just create a reserve fund, it has to be for these particular areas.
You have to have a specific purpose for it.
It can be specific.
Maybe those purposes aren't the ones you want.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
I highly recommend that you think about the tuition reserve, because populations fluctuate, most of the rest of the districts that are tuitioning out kids do have a way of putting some reserve away to, for those big classes that are coming through.
Right.
Or some changes in, in the balance. I would highly recommend that you think about doing that.
A reserve fund? And we can create a reserve fund at this meeting, even though we do not, at this time, have funds that are gonna go into it.
Right.
Okay.
Just as long as we have somebody who can really explain it well.
I, I mean, I do understand, get, take your point of like, maybe we should just not do it at this meeting, and maybe we should, we should gather, you know-
Shortly and thereafter, well, before, I mean, our meeting's gonna be in May, if we did it in June, instead of a second meeting, but I'll go on the assumption that it might pass it, you know, we could get it done even before the July, July first, right?
Right, yeah, we just have to warn it thirty days ahead of time.
I would hate for that eighteen thousand to go, you know, to be in limbo.
No, it's, it's not that money in the budget.
He said, he said that the reserve fund they have is eighteen thousand.
Oh, no, no, it's eighty.
You're not gonna know what they have, unless the audit's done, probably.
No, Stockbridge has a reserve fund now.
Oh, you're talking about the one-
Right.
Yes.
And the concern, the concern that, the first concern I had when looking at, at Article Three is, is that, you know, it, and I understand that going forward, we're, we're one district, I just see that being a big flashpoint for people, saying, Stockbridge had put away this money.
No, 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 and he was saying that this was just an example, and we could make, you can make it campus-based, you can still put in, it's just an example.
Right, can we, can we do that tonight though? Do you know, do you, so you could, you could make that, you could make that, say-
Take all these three out tonight and print one which none of those are in, or it is a version of one of them or two of them?
Right, but I mean, do we know, do we know what the language would be for there to be a, a reserve fund for Stockbridge and a reserve fund for Rochester?
I, I believe that we will be close enough to be, to be, we could plan out a, out a five thousand, I was gonna get an attorney to review it, or we could just add in the words for Stockbridge campus, I think we will say. getting attorney to review it, or we could just add in the words for Stockbridge campus.
Sure, so let's do, let's then. How do you feel about that, Jenny?
Sounds good.
We can make one for Stockbridge and one for Rochester.
That would, that would clear my issue. If it looks, visually looks like there's equality right there even in that. I think we're covering our bases. And then luckily, turns out that Stockbridge does have money to put in there, so we just don't, don't.
The mechanics of it would be, at the end of fiscal nineteen, there was a surplus of fifty thousand dollars. And the voters said, to be useful, building maintenance, you could put twenty-five in and twenty-five in. So you could, you could sort equity going forward as well as what came through from the past.
Right, so can we then, I think, it, maybe then we take.
Which one would we use of the three?
Well, I think it'd be, it'd be the future capital improvement and maintenance. It'd be Article Three, but we would duplicate it. We would say for, in whole and part, future capital improvements. Two of the district's facilities in Rochester in such amounts. And then Article Four would be.
The same thing with Rochester.
With Stockbridge, yes. And then we have one for tuition.
And one should do district tuition. Because.
Yes.
As we're going forward, we're not, this is not, we're not talking about old money coming in. We're talking about now that we're together, money being saved.
So there'll be an Article Three for Rochester, Article Four for Stockbridge.
Article Five for tuition.
For tuition for the.
Do you have more recommendation on an article on, about creating a fund for Rochester? If it should be specified for buildings? I mean, I know we don't have it, but it.
It would be a good thing.
I think we should, I'm wondering how narrow.
So if oil breaks and you don't wanna, you don't have money in your budget some year, you've got money in there.
The town does this, the town does this with the trucks.
My question is.
You have to run it. Running it on.
Yeah.
So then at any time, it would say.
This is where, this is where that, creating that fund from a fund that made Rochester board. We then transferred into.
And make the dollar round his rights and then we should be good to go.
How specific should we be with it?
I hate to get stuck with something that we later go.
I totally agree with that. I'm just, I'm wondering about specific, you know.
You're talking about a article that.
Nobody's here with a key.
He's locked the door. She's just leaving that locked. We have a key?
I don't have a key. Is there another coffee or somewhere here?
Can, can somebody call her? She, I can't manage her, she's driving very fast.
Well, will she get reception?
No.
Bigger question.
We need to get you guys.
So, okay, so if we, we can't print it out, then we have to.
We can, we can approve it, we can't sign it.
We can approve it?
Well, we'll, we'll make sure, I mean, you've got a couple of days and we can get this all signed. And I'll put somebody on it.
I put a copy to us.
What's that printer right there? Do we, there's a printer sitting right there.
Well, you're the tech guy.
You should, no, I know that one.
No, I see where you're going.
And I just kind of wondered.
Why should I think about that?
Yeah, I think we should find out.
Don't put anything in there. Put one in about a gallon of AM for now, and then we have to do it all.
The tuition one?
I think the tuition is important.
I think the tuition is important.
I think the building is the tuition.
So these three articles, three articles we talked about. The two, one building for Stockbridge goes for Rochester.
Yeah, and one shared one.
Share.
I just think we have to be able to buffer those calls for like.
Yeah, I agree. I think, and I think, I think reading it that way too, where it's one.
Okay, so. We gotta get that.
Yes, I know.
So without me.
Yeah, I know.
I hope I have to cancel, I'm so sorry.
I'll take that over again. That page, well, you see if you can print, just try to, perhaps print something there and see if it works. So, the last piece we need, we need to talk about that David points out is the, look at the date and times. We'd agreed it was, we'd agreed it was here, we agreed it was seven.
Now, do we, we have, we have agreed about it being in the Rochester auditorium. I just want to make sure that that feels good still.
Jenny, Jenny, this is.
This is very, this is pretty important. I, we had all agreed on this before. Actually, your stock, we're judging it.
Just wait one more second.
We had discussed this before and we had decided that we would hold this first annual meeting in the Rochester High School Auditorium. And I want to make sure that we are still in agreeance and maybe with some public comment on.
Did you read the flag's ready?
On that decision. Yes, the only, the other option would be the meeting house.
Call Joanne Mascher.
Okay, shut down the tape. The reason we thought the Rochester.
Well, it's larger.
It's a lot larger. For some people, this is might be the first time that they're really seeing it and see the value of it and.
I don't know. I mean, where's, I've been.
Yeah. It doesn't, it doesn't send up any red flags with this? That's what we're.
I mean, it doesn't with me, I mean.
Yeah. Well, feeling was big, it was the biggest base. And we were afraid to forget. We were afraid that there'd be more, there'd be a ton of people here.
Have you been to dinner before, like, in the, in the.
I think what, I think what a lot of people say is, the Stockbridge people don't come when it's in Rochester. So that would be the only scary thing is that more Stockbridge people will come if it's held in Stockbridge. But that is larger, so I think it's, it's against the way.
You know what? It's the appropriate place to have it, guys.
It is.
So that's it. The one district is the appropriate.
And we also have.
It won't fit at the school.
We gotta.
No, we can't.
We gotta get it over with.
Yeah, that's it. It's the appropriate place to have it.
We are, we are going to drive.
The comfortable speed, there's the stage, that's the place to have it. The auditorium is now an hour district.
Exactly, it's your auditorium.
And the fifteenth is the date, work? The date is still the fifteenth?
The fifteen, the twenty-second.
Fifteen, twenty-second. I thought it was the twenty-second.
No, we have to.
No, you guys need to vote on that twenty-second being the date you're gonna do this tonight, too.
Right, so you push it back.
You may go now, thank you. You can stay if you want, but I'm working, I'm working that night.
So the twenty-second, Tuesday the twenty-second.
We'll make sure we schedule it just right.
Tuesday the twenty-second, here, seven PM.
Did everyone hear this?
Tuesday the twenty-second.
You need to vote on Article One. So if you wanted to vote on it, I could print it out tomorrow and we'd get you around the signatures.
Okay, well, that would, I mean.
So what did you say? We, you would like us to tell you what, tell you the articles? You got it?
I've got the article.
Okay, can you read them back to us to make?
Okay, so the first article is Article One, to hear the reports of the school district and hearing the reports of the board of school directors, the district treasurer, the superintendent, and to take action with the reference thereof. Article Two, shall the voters of the school district approve the school board to expend four million two hundred and fifty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the entire fiscal year.
Sorry, read that number again.
Four-two-five-one.
Four-two-five-one, four-nine-four.
Four-nine-four, thank you.
It is estimated this proposed budget, if approved or not, result in education spending of. I'll get, but.
The number is.
Yes?
Does this feel too fast for me?
No, 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 I'm fine with this.
Because you did say you thought we should look at the language.
No, that is for an additional, possible.
Yeah, 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 for additional.
Okay, good.
But thank you for checking it.
Seventeen thousand six-four-four-oh-one. I'm equalizing, pre-equalizing people. This rejected spending will, will pre-equalize people to seven point seven percent higher than spending for the current year in Rochester, seven point six percent higher than the current year in Stockbridge. Article Three, shall the school district establish a reserve fund to be funded from time to time from its accumulated fund balance at any end to be used to fund in whole or in part future capital improvements to and maintenance of the district's facilities in Rochester in such amounts as the district board of school directors determines appropriate. Next article is exactly the same except that it's in Stockbridge.
My instinct?
Flip them.
Yeah.
Put Stockbridge first.
Exactly.
I think, I just.
It's just a little moving, a little.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going alpha, that's a.
So that's Article Three and Four, the same except for in Rochester, in Stockbridge first and in Rochester then one, then Article Four. Then Article Five, shall the school district establish a reserve fund to be funded from time to time from its accumulated fund balance at any end to be used to fund in whole or in part student secondary tuition expenses in such amounts as the district board of school directors determines appropriate.
Fair.
The next one is deleted. And so we then move from five to six. So six becomes, shall the voters authorize the school board to borrow by issuance of bond or notes for something like, not in excess of anticipated revenue for the upcoming school year. Article Seven, to transact any other business products coming from the meeting. Dates at Rochester from one to several teams there, April of two thousand eighteen, board of school directors. Sixty, my name and space is.
All right.
I make a motion.
Well, they said time on the twenty-second.
Seventy.
Seventy-seven.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the warning for the annual meeting as David has read. Seconded.
Hearing, motions have made it seconded to approve the amended warning as presented by the business manager to this meeting, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay.
So as soon as I print it in the morning, I'll email it.
So you want, and then you want us to scan it in and send back to you?
We did it, we did it.
Nobody's happy.
I just got kicked a bunch of water in the car.
Perfect question, nobody's happy.
I haven't drank it yet.
How do we get our, I should say, should we scan in? Should we scan it in and send it back to him? Because otherwise he won't have our signatures.
Okay, we need another meeting to officially sign now.
No.
You can sign it, we can, we can, Bruce?
He'll be back in a moment.
Ah.
Oh, no. You can't go to that.
Well, Bruce, the, the point being, Bruce, the.
Carl.
The.
You went to the bathroom?
I'm sorry.
The, what are you, what are you coming to Stockbridge, the Stockbridge area? Are you here tomorrow?
There's no school.
No school, that's right. Oh, well.
Never mind the town.
We can come.
Well, you're trying to figure out the mechanics of how.
Getting the data document signed, yeah.
I'll have Christie put, well, Christie's not in tomorrow, but I'll have somebody put out a thing and we'll try to figure it out where we can find you.
I can scan mine.
Yeah, I can scan mine.
Well, the thing you need to remember is that what is signed is gonna be posted. So we, we.
We need to have all signatures of one page.
Okay, so can we send it up to, down to the Stockbridge town clerk and have you guys stop into the Stockbridge town clerk? And then it comes up to Rochester and go to the Rochester town clerk?
Yeah.
There is an alternative. It's an alternative that our attorney has approved. My reading of the statute says that for union districts, it shall be warned by the district clerk or by the chair. It's not necessarily for the signatures. Now, maybe good for political reasons to have all the signatures on. It's a different issue.
Yeah.
I think we need to have all of them.
We'll get your, we'll get your signatures, I'll find you.
Yeah.
So I will say out to you the wording, so that before you get the time to sit down and sign it, you will see, you will see all the names.
Okay, so I know it's getting late, so I will try to be quick. But I, we need to talk about our Stockbridge Rochester line, the annual booklet that we're gonna send out, okay? So.
The two mountains clashing now.
Yes, I know, I was.
It's come together.
Oh, that's a brilliant idea. That should totally, yeah, that's the picture.
Stockbridge is the point where the tweed and the white meet and become like the.
Oh, that is a really, really important picture. Like the map, this is the map where they come together.
That's a great idea. So I'd like somebody else to be on graphics for the front.
Megan?
Megan. Sure. I guess the, kind of the nuts and bolts I was neat was to talk to you guys about is that, um. Okay, so I'm sure there's a cost difference between this spiral and this. I don't know what it is. I was assuming you guys have used Spalding as what we.
We've used, we've, we've used Spalding. And we used to do, when we were at different dates, we did two booklets and then we just kind of got.
Got into one, okay.
Sucked into that one.
So I know in Rochester, the last time we sent stuff out, we have done a pre-printed address like this. And I noticed on the last report of this, if you guys have address labels. So we just need to look and think about that.
Yeah.
If you guys want to use address labels, I mean, that's fine. I think we're gonna end up printing two different backs to this anyway. One with Rochester's postage permit and one with Stockbridge's postage permit. Because this is, is part of our budget. We don't, we don't really have a budget we can access yet.
Where do we get?
So I think that that's actually. What they eat, what they have to pay. To do. So I guess from Stockbridge, I don't know if you guys, I don't know if you guys know how many you need. I know Rochester needs about eight hundred. And it's, okay.
Do you want, do you want to start laying this out?
Okay, sure. Right, and then we just have to figure out what goes into it.
Yep.
So I like Megan's idea about the cover. So we put like, Chabon, Megan and whoever.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Whoever's supposed to work on it, okay.
I think it's helped you, talk about, not a little mention of why we picked the graphic.
Yeah.
Like inside, because it says on the back cover, you put it, you know, picture above, does it, where the two towns.
It's literally where.
Right, and we have, we have, this has to be in their hand. So we picked May twenty-second as the.
Seven o'clock.
As the day of the meeting. They have to have that ten days beforehand.
Yep, in their head, ten days. As May twelfth.
So May twelfth, so we need to, I mean.
We should call, because there's probably gonna be other ones going, Spalding is busy.
Right, we need to, we need to check with them. We also need to, and we also need to probably show the, the, the audience need to look at the numbers, right?
Are there traditional reports?
Yes, there, and.
Do we write a letter?
Yeah, the, the, the chair usually writes the board of directors' report. Now, I noticed in, so this is what you guys sent out this year. And that included your school director's report, the principal report, and superintendent's report. And then this is not the right one, is it?
That's, that's probably the right one, because that's the, this year's one had nothing in it.
Doesn't have the budget.
Well, that's what I wanted to be citing, and I'm, here we go. Here, that's what I wanted to be citing, had the wrong one. Okay, so you have.
Right, this is.
Your warning, because we had to have a warning, just like, like we did. Then it's a summary of the school meeting from the year passed. So we have also provided that, I don't think that's something we need. I don't think we need to put the SU report in, because we put it in here in Rochester's report and you guys put it in Stockbridge's report, so. The only other reports were like.
Who are the principals' reports for Stockbridge?
Uh, where is he? Is he in the bathroom again? Seems to be going there every time we need him.
Maybe next week, like, should we come together to?
Oh, Jenny.
To come together about the booklet?
I think he's around the corner talking with David.
Yeah, or do we want to just set up a little, you know, a little committee that doesn't have to warn anything to just create this?
Right, well, that's the, if you, if you, the three of us work on it.
Okay. Yeah, let me let us know. I'm, I'm.
Does that work?
Happy to proof.
What are we talking, I missed. We're just talking about, you know, the booklet. And then rather than us all having to warn another meeting to come together, let's just have a small committee to, to work on it and get it out.
I would be happy to look at any writing.
I would really.
I'm sorry. Do you, who, which one you did the Rochester survey?
It was, it was the three of us.
You stayed too late. What would be really, really great, I think, to have it here besides this, would be, would be, because you did some really great stuff for our survey.
Yeah, I kept a survey, yeah.
Can you maybe look at their numbers? Because it'd be great to be able to say, that's just, here's the school.
See what the trends are.
Here's what, here's what, so.
That's really, this is how we lined up.
Exactly. So you could, you were, because you know all the survey data.
Jess?
Yeah, Jess was...
Mm-hmm. Are you able to coordinate with Jenny to get her some of that information?
Yes.
Thank you.
Because that'd be cool, like, if you did have the letter I've been writing, and that way we can have something considered, it talks about it, two different cultures and...
Yep, okay.
Is it, is it worse? No, 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 that's a good idea, no.
Okay.
Some of the good ideas.
So, great.
All right, so, um, anything else?
We've given the annual report, and, and the public comment?
Any public comments?
I think the public is pumped now. Thank you so much for...
Yes, Jess!
You might want to consider, since the buildings are going to be kind of a hot topic, you and I talked about this, perhaps the annual meeting might be a good time to advertise for a building committee, yes, that includes community members that are really piped in about it, you know, reel them in and get them to help make these decisions, including expanding Stockbridge.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Utilizing space in Rochester, and we can have people from all the towns, teachers, and like a couple of board members, so you don't have to warn these things, they can just happen, you know, in a living room, or on the park, you know, so we can just keep the wheels going.
And on top of that, what, what we had talked about is us coming up with our direction, what we want, so that we can give this committee, they can say, well, this is what the board wants, this is what the board wants educationally, this is the, all right, how can we make it work in what we have, and what do we need to bump out, what do we need to reduce?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
What's the money for? Um, there are two meetings that we need to schedule, one is obviously our preparatory meeting, which we'll all be at, and the second one was, we said we would have an informational meeting once we've decided on the budget.
At both, in both towns.
Yeah, in both towns, so we need to, that's three, so three meetings we need to, one between now and May.
We are having an informational meeting prior to the budget meeting?
We spoke of it last week, so I mean, it would be beneficial, given, well, this was given the nature of last week's budget.
That's what they suggested.
Um, but to get, charity made a good suggestion about hosting two different public, you know, forums where we present the budget, taking questions, so maybe the night of the budget, we're not really going through such a tough time, we've already hashed out a lot of our...
Or we're going to do it three times.
Well, but the other thing is, I mean, you know, this is all about how much we want to work, but the, you know, the, the handout for the, for the merger was really, really useful, everybody said how useful that was, and I don't know if we want to do even something like that, whether we just leave it to a meeting, or whether we do a handout saying, these are the choices we've made, these are the pluses.
Oh, yeah.
Should we just write something into the report, so we don't have another, we don't want another...
Well, I was just saying, if we're doing these informational meetings anyway, it's always nice to hand out something that then they can take with them, I'm talking about diffusing the energy that comes into that auditorium.
Yeah.
Is, is, is by, the more information, this is what worked so well for us in the merger, was having that really nicely done, information she could use.
Yeah, who did that?
Didn't you do that?
I, everything honestly is becoming... What I had done in the last...
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you were part of that, because I remember thinking...
I think I added, it was part of a group, I think Rob and myself.
Oh, I remember Rob. So, and then for, I think that's a great idea, because it just gets, it just gets it out front, the facts, let's get the facts right out front.
I think we should also be highlighting the, the things that we spoke of tonight about the benefits to each town.
The future plan.
And things that we can get to this year, but we're definitely want and plan later, and, and, you know, that's what...
I think that is a great idea.
There's a big job ahead of us.
So when do we want to have that meeting?
Hand that out at the meeting.
The informational meeting, so that then they have it well before...
So hand that out before the informational meeting, or at the...
No, I think, I had the informational meeting, and then, you know, if they come in...
So it has to be before the twenty-second?
Well, the informational meeting has to be before the twenty-second, so we're getting tight for three meetings, because, I mean, or do we just let the informational meetings be our preparation meetings? I, I would...
That might work. I don't know, let's, let's, let's look at the schedule.
Yeah, we do have a meeting, um...
May first.
May first, regular, a regular scheduled meeting is May first. So we are here, April.
So it'd be nice.
So that, I, I kind of, I think that maybe is our next meeting, right?
Yep.
May first?
Yeah.
I don't think we've been reaching...
I would suggest that you do a prep meeting, look each of the ten.
That's what we discussed.
Sorry, I missed that, I was...
Do you run off?
No, I was, would you go to that?
He's not, he's testing the plumbing. We didn't build it. Sorry, you just turned that...
Okay. So we'll just plan for our regular scheduled meeting on May first, and we'll go from there.
And we'll try to, we'll try to have some, some conversations about the booklet and things, we can have some...
Some final stuff going on?
I would, I would recommend that we schedule the informational meetings tonight, so that we can have them well advanced.
Because we should get information out about it, yeah.
And then May first, we can do our informational sheet and do that kind of stuff, but, like, just think...
Want to make it the week before the twenty-second?
Yeah, so...
You want to do, now, do we want to do a dog and pony show in, in each town, or just do it simultaneously?
Night, David.
Yeah. The Tuesday and the Thursday of the, of the, the week prior.
That sounds good to me.
Yep, uh, what is it, we don't need Bruce to run for anything, right?
No.
Fifteenth is...
Oh, no, he has to be at both meetings, so, okay, well...
I thought she was letting me go tonight.
Well, Bruce is busy every Tuesday, so...
No, he doesn't have to be at these, I think this is...
So the fifteenth and the seventeenth?
Yeah.
Fifteenth and the seventeenth?
Fifteenth, Rochester, let's, let's do Stockbridge first.
Sure.
Stockbridge on the fifteenth, and Rochester on the seventeenth.